And good evening. Today is January the 7th. Right now it's 7:34 and I'm calling to order this evening's meeting of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. For the benefit of those who have not participated in a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, our procedures are as follows. The Secretary will read the legal notice of the meeting as published in the local newspapers. The applicant will come forward to present the case, explaining to the Commission and all those present what is being requested of this property. Comments of town agencies will be read for each application if there are any. First, there'll be clarifying questions from the Commissioners and then there'll be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Next, we'll have those who want to support the application come forward. Second, we'll ask those opposing the application to come forward. As this is a public meeting and must be recorded, it will be necessary for speakers to identify themselves by stating their name and address before addressing the Commission. The applicant will be free to leave then or remain for the balance of the public hearing in the regular meeting during which the Commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of the Commission has the right to appeal to Spirit Court desired. Decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Office at (203453) 8039 after 9 o'clock. Seated tonight are the following members of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. We have Tom Cost, I'm Rich Meyer, Walter Corby is to my left. We have Richard Wallace, Josh Hirschman, George Underhill. Staff, we have George Crowell, Reggie Reed, and Michelle Nazaro is sitting in for Katie. Katie had her baby yesterday, so congratulations to Katie. Good for her.
Congratulations, Katie.
Congratulations, Katie. Shannon Gales running the cameras.
She'll never watch this video.
Oh, she's gonna watch it. She's watching it. She wishes it could be here.
She had her baby this morning.
As long as they're healthy, it's great. Okay, so you are gonna seat all the members. We don't have too many people, so everyone is seated. And Mr. Secretary, it's your turn.
Legal notice, Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on July 7th, 2015, at 7:30 PM at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, Menoncatuck Room, 2nd floor, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut for the following purposes. Number one, Carney Kelly, 108 Wilderwood Drive, MAP 83, Lot 15-66, Zone R7. Special permit, home handicraft industry commercial kitchen, Section 273-38V. Number two, delete and replace, Section 273-47, site maintenance, outside display of merchandise. Copies of these applications are available for inspection at the Office of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard and written communications will be received dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 15th day of December 2014. Richard Meyer, Chairman.
Thank you, Walter. I appreciate that. We need to open a public hearing. Are we gonna change the rotation in the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to revise the agenda to move number...
Five.
Number five to number one. Or rather, move number five ahead of number one and retain the order.
That's great. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's open the... Or do we have to open this or we're already open on this?
Thank you for agreeing to move the site first. This is the consideration of adopting the Guilford Community Coastal Resilience Plan as part of the Plan of Conservation and Development. We had a public hearing several months ago where quite a bit of public comment was received by the Commission. A number of questions were asked, a number of issues raised. The planning team at the time and the Commission, of course, voted to continue the public hearing to tonight. Since then, a number of other, quite a few other, public hearing items and other agenda items have come forward for tonight's meeting. And we believe, most importantly, because of the importance of the Coastal Resilience Plan and the public involvement and understanding of this plan, we believe that it's desirable to have a public hearing time in which we can fully air the issues and comments and have lots of public participation in that. We don't feel that we can really do that at tonight's meeting constrained by all the other applications. And therefore, we're requesting that you continue the public hearing to March 4th, which is a regular meeting of the Commission. We would then endeavor to limit or prevent any other items coming before you on that particular night so that we can use the March 4th date as the, an opportunity to fully vet all the issues that have been associated with this, with this plan and obtain the maximum public participation, which is really the most important aspect about this plan. So with your permission, we'd like you to move this hearing to March 4th, continue it to March 4th in this, at this time and in this room or perhaps in the room downstairs. I'd also like to submit a couple of documents that have been prepared by the team preparing and working on the Coastal Resilience Plan. These have been all emailed to the Commission members as of yesterday. You have received these, but I'd like to put them in the public record, make them available for public scrutiny. They'll be on the town's website tomorrow. One is called Guilford Community Coastal Resilience Plan, List of Public Concerns Regarding the Plan. These were our understanding of the questions which were raised at the January 7th public hearing. We've endeavored to provide written responses to all those questions. So we certainly want the Commission to review these and we also want the public to review them. So these documents will be available at Town Hall South in paper form or on the town's website if you'd like to look at them. There's another document that is very important that we'd like to submit. It's called Global Sea Level Rise Scenarios for the United States National Climate Assessment. It's a report of several federal agencies that attempts to summarize the sea level rise science as it was understood and is understood. And we'd like to submit that for the public record also. You have copies of that that'll also be placed on the town's website. In anticipation of trying to wrap up with some of the key questions that you might have, Chuck Andrews is with us tonight. As you probably know, he's here for several items on the agenda tonight, your counsel. And he's available right now. If you should have questions about this document, he can address or about the coastal planning process or about plans of conservation and development or any other issues, he's here right now if you wanna ask him anything. We'll also invite him to the March 4th hearing should he be, so he can be available for public questions and comments that relate to legal issues. If you have anything in particular you'd like to have him address, I think he would probably like to hear about that now. Also, the other members of our, of our team, our, our planning team would like to anticipate, would like to know what questions you have that we haven't addressed or we haven't heard about or, or that are not part of this question and answer scenario that we've tried to define. So before you move on the, on my request for hearing continuation, if you do have questions or comments, I think we'd like to hear about it.
Well, first off, I sent you by email a letter from a citizen.
Yes.
Will that be...
That will be part of the record.
Okay, fine. So that's good. Guys, do you have any questions you wanna ask George? I know Chuck has a couple things that he and I spoke about yesterday and I'd like him to just take a second. One of the concerns I heard in the initial feedback from some residents was the eminent domain issue. And I asked Chuck to sort of, sort that out. Chuck's a lot better at this than I am. So Chuck, would you mind just shedding a little bit of light on the eminent domain side of this?
Sure. That's, I think that's a fear. Actually, when this initially came out, the first draft, that was one of the concerns as to whether adoption of this plan would, how it would affect private property rights. What eminent domain is, just in short, it's, it's the right for the government to acquire land provided just compensation is paid. It's in the Constitution. It's, it's vested in a number of government agencies, including the municipalities. So municipalities now have the right to condemn property for, for public purposes. You see it typically, most frequently in road cases where there's road widening. There's lots of cases, look on the judicial website, you know, they're widening a road and they wanna take some property and the DOT declares, you know, put some money and you can contest it. It's required, anyone thinks you're not getting enough money and then you go to court and you, you fight over that stuff. And that's typically what the issues are. Am I getting enough money for my property? And there's, there's fights about that. There was a big case a few years ago, the Kilo case out of New London, where that was a controversial case because it was condemned, the, the land was condemned and taken by the city of New London and it was purportedly to be used for economic development purposes. And there were some questions whether it was a valid proper purpose to, for exercising the eminent domain powers. I think the project never got built and it would, it generated a lot of bad blood and there was very various legislative responses to that to limit the power and so forth. But it, that's, so I think there's a sense that, you know, it's, I guess if it's not the conventional, you know, road widening or something and if you're exercising eminent domain for certain purposes, there's a real queasiness, I think, on behalf of a lot of government agencies to even go there. So the issue, I guess, is does this, what does this plan say about that? Does it do anything about that? Does it increase it or whatever? The, the plan itself is an advisory document. The powers that are, are eminent domain powers, it doesn't increase or decrease. It doesn't do anything. Those things have to come from the state laws. Right now, the town has the power to exercise eminent domain and there's certain, there can be quasi municipal agencies that can do that. I think the main thing in the plan, there is a Section 6 and actually the architects of the plan can address it. They, they talk about various, there is a section of the plan that talks about property acquisition, that that's, if an area itself is going to be flooded and so forth, that may be as part of good planning for the future. You may wanna consider acquiring the property. So the question is, how do you acquire? In the list of, of options in the table, the eminent domain isn't mentioned. I did a word search to see if eminent domain's even mentioned in the plan. It is mentioned in, in the, in the list of options for property acquisition. It's not in the table, but there's sort of a footnote that says, in theory eminent domain is out there and it can be exercised, but it's the least desirable option and it's not listed as, as one of the ones that are mentioned in the plan. So what the plan, I think it contemplates more of a voluntary acquisition, a market base, that if there's funds, if there's some sort of funding available for a town to acquire the property and the proprietor wants to sell it, just like any other sort of, you know, market transaction, that, yeah, that, that can occur. But I didn't see this plan itself, it certainly didn't advocate eminent domain. It put a red flag around it. I think in fairness, it did have to mention that is a possibility because it is. But that I, I didn't see the plan itself as, as recommending it in any sense.
So hypothetically, let's say one of the folks live in town and they've lived in this house for three generations.
Sure.
It's right on the water and it's looking not good as far as title rise is concerned. Does this document in any way facilitate against their will, the town taking that property away?
I, I, no. I, I don't see that this does do that. I, I think it, again, it's, it's part of the planning. It's not putting, town isn't putting its head in the, in the sand. It is actually looking forward and envisioning that could happen and trying proactively to figure out ways to do that. But I, there's no, I didn't read this anywhere to say that it's recommending that the town acquire property against people's will by eminent domain.
So do you have a question?
Well, I'm just gonna say, the, the way, the way this reads, I'm not sure that I agree with Chuck. In, in the essence of this, it says, well, not, not presented in Table 6, it is noted that eminent domain, whether outright or through conditional lease, remains a legal means of property acquisition for public purposes. G S Title 48. How are multiple aspects of eminent domain making the least desirable alternative for land acquisition, legal justification, lack of ownership consent, and on and on. So...
So the question is, does this document increase the town, the town's ability to do it or does it just...
I don't think it increases the town's ability. It's already got the ability.
Right, right, right. Without that.
I, I think what that is, is, Tom, you're absolutely right, that is in there. There's a list of like seven different ways. That isn't even in the list, but there's a footnote in the bottom and I think it's responsible because the power is there, you know, and it could happen. Hopefully you have the right elected officials. I think the protection, one of the protections is that for any property acquisition under the Guilford Town Charter, it must be a town meeting as well.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, that, that would apply. But, but that power is there. I mean, that, you know, and it, I don't think this advocates, but it, but it does exist.
Well, maybe if, if this title rise becomes more serious and it starts to be an issue, I guess that might be a campaign issue for some elected officials to say, well, if I'm elected, then I won't take your house away or whatever they say in the newspaper. So, okay. And it's important to note that Chuck is unbiased here. I asked him to read this and give his opinion. He is town council and he advises us. I trust him and I believe that he is telling the truth. So I know that a lot of people were concerned about that and I really wanted someone who could talk about it. Walter, you have a question?
I do.
What is that question?
I have a question. Chuck, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, Tom brings up that some people might possibly read this as either advocating for eminent domain or simply raising it as a possibility that already exists. Is there a way that this plan could be responsibly drafted to explicitly advocate against eminent domain in spite of the fact that it is advisory?
Certainly, you can make amendments to it. You can add language. You could, you could say, you can, that there's already a statement in there of why they think eminent domain is bad. You can strengthen that. You, you could say, we recommend it not be pursued. You know, you're certainly free to do that.
And, and the other side of that sword is that if the town buys that property, they're gonna do it with taxpayer dollars. So it's every inch dollars that are gonna be used to purchase that property. And that's an important thing to remember too.
Well, I just have a quick thing to bring to your attention more or less because I think that it might be a concern at the next meeting if one comes. A lot of issues that we noticed at our last hearing on this was people worried about that property values decreasing because the town just sort of thinks that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna give up this land and now you're a million and a half dollar house on the water, it's not really worth anything. And they were raising some notice issues on land records because now the town is sort of, if they were to accept this plan, they're sort of acknowledging the fact that there is a possibility that this land property is not wanting to be here in the next 80 years or 100 years. And I don't know if you have any answers today and I don't necessarily want you to, just something to sort of think about going forward. If, if there is anything that needs to be put on the land record, is it possible? Is it necessary? Is it required?
It's the question, I, I mean, I understand the argument and I, if I were to, I could make the argument. I disagree with it, but I, I kinda understand it.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just think that that might be a question that is going to be raised by a lot of people. I don't know. I don't have the answer to that at all.
Sure. Well, is that land records question?
The land record is sort of, so if I'm going to, so the purpose of land record is to supply notice for any easements or curarences or issues with the property, not more or less. And so is this a required, is this a required land record, is this something that's required to be put on the land record if town believes that this property isn't gonna be here in the next 100 years?
Oh, I see. I think, I, I'm not aware of any legal obligation that you would have, that town would be obligated to put anything on the land records.
So that was the other thing you and I had discussed was, you know, if we jump in the middle of the game, are we going to devalue people's properties by using this document? And the answer is, maybe.
Yeah, I, I think so. It's possible someone can make the argument. Hey, I have this great property. Now you've got this plan that, that shows that some area is gonna be flooded. It's, it's a public document. Someone can look at that. I was gonna sell this and they read this and say, now I'm not gonna buy it. And as a result of your publicity, I've lost a sale. So if you've taken my property, give me money. I mean, that, that's sort of a...
That's a viable loss.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's the adverse publicity. And then, I, I mean, the immediate question is, in my mind, is there's a causation question element that the, you know, it's almost as if, if you buy that, that the town is being penalized for doing what it's supposed to be doing, which is good planning. I mean, you're actually supposed to in, in your Plan of Conservation and Development, obligated to consider sea level rise issues. And so you do it and then someone is saying, you know, you shouldn't have. Yeah, I mean, you may disagree about it. You may think the science is this or that or whatever, but I think you're supposed to consider it. And I, I don't think that the, you know, the reason that the property values are, are being diminished, I, I would think that it's not because the town is studying the issue, it's because the sea is rising. I mean, I, I mean, that, that's sort of what, you know, if it is, I mean, again, you may disagree with the whole premise, but that's, you know, I, I don't, I think the town is doing a responsible thing by, by looking at the issue.
Chuck, can this, this is a component of P O C D, correct?
It will become that, yes.
Yeah. There's gonna be a massive hearing on the accepting of the...
There'll be a hearing on the entire document and all components sometime when, George?
Spring.
In this coming spring. This could be amended at that time?
Yeah, you're certainly free. You, you can have a public hearing and someone can raise some points. You can take out language, add language. That's certainly, you can do, just like you do in a zoning amendment where you can, you can modify it.
We could do that anywhere in the process, even after it's adopted.
Correct.
We could change it back, so...
Yeah, and, and you can, after the close of the public hearing, you could digest the comments and take out things and edit it.
So, other questions?
Chuck, the, the last thing I just wanted to ask you. Sometimes in the past, we've been referred, this, this Commission and specifically the individual Commissioners have been referred to as jurors on certain issues. In this instance, I just wanted to ask you whether or not we can actually make public comment on this plan outside of the meeting and/or take public input.
Certainly, you're acting in a somewhat different capacity here. You're acting legislatively versus administratively is the legal term, or quasi judicial. Those are the things. Sometimes you, zoning boards act as a judge. It's typically at ZBA when they appeal Reggie's decision to ZBA, was she right or wrong? You hear the evidence. You base your decision on the evidence there. That's sort of, you're acting like a judge. And a lot of times, when you hear special permit applications or coastal site plans, does it comply with the regulations? You're supposed to base it on the, on the evidence that you hear because that's what you should base it on. This case is a little different because you're acting legislatively, you're acting in a policymaking position. You're not deciding anyone's property, right? You're not deciding an application. You're adapting the law and it's an advisory law. It's not even zoning amendment, which affects people. It's, it's something that is, actually, it's, it's good doing, but it doesn't have any specific impact on, on, on any, you know, no one's applying for anything. You're just adopting the legislation. So it's a little bit different. You know, it, it's good for, for public interest purposes. If you hear stuff, you know, off the record, you should probably, if the public council would put it on the record so everyone knows what the knowledge base is that you're basing your decision on. That's always good, good practice, but it's, it's a little less strict then, in some ways you're out.
Before we go on the request to continue the hearing, I just want to also point out that, urge people to look at the town's website under Town Documents. If they're interested in the subject, we place two other technical documents that were written by the, the study team that deal with the vulnerability assessment, so called, and the, and the risks associated with coastal sea level rise, previous studies that were done. Those are now on the town's website, so anyone can look at them. Also, we place on the town website the statutes related to this particular subject. So I urge people to look at them, but I also urge you to vote to continue this work.
You're urging that.
The, the placement in the record was being also the risk of vulnerability and the options that are placed on the record. Also, the, as Chuck was indicating, the Public Act 113179 deals with coastal site planning and where Chuck just mentioned that the Plan of Conservation and Development needs to follow sea level changes published by the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration Technical Report, O A R C P O dash one.
Right.
And also, a second public act is placed on the record, Federal Act 13 dash nine, Enacting Climate Change Adaption and Data Collection. So those are also being placed on the record.
Great. So, so, so really, this is important and everybody has access to it on the town website. And if you don't have a computer or someone wants, they can get the paper documents and they can read them and they should become educated about it. Chuck? Anything else? We're all set. Oh, wait, George?
I just wanna have one question. As the plan stands and the way you understand it, is there any possibility that you can see in the plan where eminent domain would come into play?
Where eminent domain would come into point under this plan?
Yeah. I mean, you got, you got an overview, right? Toward the area, courtesy of George, and looked it over and everything like that. And I'm trying to get from you if there is any possibility that it could be eminent domain any stretch where that, where that line is now.
I, I don't see it coming from this plan. It doesn't mean that someone can't decide, you know, that the town officials can't decide to exercise eminent domain. But the plan, it's an advisory document and it doesn't recommend it. I mean, that, that's how I...
I just wonder if it's a reality that there is a portion or some section of it that would be subject to this eminent domain.
I, I didn't see it. It recommend, I mean, just look up and reading it. I, I've looked at this and it doesn't recommend it. Again, there's a whole point on, on property acquisition because I think that's one of the responsible things you, you consider and anyone who's thinking of property acquisition is gonna think, what about eminent domain? So I think it kinda has to say something about it. And it does sort of in a footnote and it's a, Tom had grabbed, he's absolutely right, that's in there, but it, it says all the reasons why it's not a good thing. So I, you know, someone could say, it is a good thing, but, but I don't see this coming out of the plan.
Good. So, thank you, Chuck. You are wonderful. So we have to get some questions together and we're gonna have a public hearing in March?
March 4th.
March 4th. So I really urge everybody to...
We gotta move it first.
I know. We are, I urge everyone to get involved in it, become familiar with it, and please attend our public hearing. Please let your voice be heard by us. We really want your input, everybody. Do you wanna make a motion?
Move the table, Liz.
To? When?
March 4th.
Good.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Wonderful. Carrie's. Good news. Okay. Thank you, everybody. And Chuck, thank you again. Okay, back to the original lineup. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing on Guilford Agricultural Society, 111 Le MarSlam, 40138? Thank you. Those in favor? Aye. Give us the good news.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, I'm Attorney Tom Cronin. My office is now at 20 Water Street across the, across the Green premiere, Basil Munkin's old office. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And welcome back to the Guilford Agricultural Society, round three, or four, or five. Before I begin tonight, I have a series of handouts I'd like to give to you. I'm gonna guess that these are not unfamiliar documents, but, and I'd like these all marked as individual exhibits if I could. They're all germane to tonight's matter. The first document is the approval from May 22nd, 1989. That's the original special exception permit that is kind of the baseline that we are here seeking to operate under. And Chuck. And, of course, the second document, to like mark as Exhibit 2...
Attorney Cronin, did the original have Hank's signature? I mean, had Mr. Greaver's signature at the bottom?
Actually, the original was, the copy that I had is a two-sided copy, but I would represent to you that that is the actual meat and potatoes of the approval.
It's everything except for that signature on it.
I think, I think that's, that's, there's nothing substantive that's not on, on that page. When I went to copy it today, I don't, I didn't pass double-sided copy 101 and I didn't get it. The, the second document that I'm handing out that I'd like marked as the Exhibit 2 is the Statement of Use. And I believe this is actually in your package that you have, but it's possible that not everybody in the council may not have it. And I don't know whether Attorney Shanks can tell you that. And the third document... And the third document, which would be marked as exhibit three, is a distilled version of what I'd like to talk to you about tonight. Call it a white paper. I hope I'm going to have enough of these.
Just wanted to tell the commission that the second page just says that they should submit three copies to the file, and has Henry Graver's signature at the bottom.
Good work.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
What I'm going to do for the next few minutes is amplify exhibit three that I just handed out to you. A little bit of background, exhibit one is the 1989 special permit, that's kind of the starting point for the history here. In 2013, I think it was September, the Ag Society came before this board, I happened to be here on another matter, I wasn't representing them at the time, but I happened to be here for that public hearing, there was a great deal of discussion. I think Ray Bauer was the chair at the time, and Ray, in my opinion, in kind of Solomonic fashion, said, well, first of all, there's two buildings in play here, and I'd like to refer, if I can, to this map up here, which I think is in your package. If it's not, I'd ask the clerk, I can leave this here and have this marked as exhibit four. This is actually the very same map that was presented back in September of 2013, and what I've done is I've highlighted on here two buildings, one in green and one in pink. Now, the history here in 2013 was that the agricultural society, for good reason or bad, and I think a lot of people would say more bad than good, had erected two buildings, one I would call a barn and one I would call a pavilion. And I'm not sure I could tell you the difference, but to keep the thing straight, there's a barn and a pavilion. And I believe that they believed that when they erected these, that they had gotten all the requisite permits. And I think that it's pretty easy to acknowledge at this point, no, they did not. So they were here in 2013, looking for an after-the-fact approval for two buildings that have been constructed in an area that is the subject of a special exception, and in my opinion, that clearly needs zoning approval, and in my opinion, that approval has to come from this board. That's my opinion tonight. That would have been my opinion in September of 2013, sort of my opinion in September of 1999. So, in September of 2013, this commission approved on a permanent basis the green building, which I would call the barn. It approved the pink building, which I would call the pavilion, on a temporary basis. The, what the minutes of that meeting say is that the pavilion is authorized for use through the end of 2013, and the applicant, the Ag Society, is directed to go talk to the neighbors who are concerned about uses and so on, and see if you can work out your differences. And I don't know, I have a feeling, in all candor, that there wasn't a lot of working out that happened between September of 2013 and the end of 2013. When I became involved, which was around the middle of 2014, the, I'll say, I'll call it the fair, the event season, if you will, was starting to, you know, get rolling, and the status of the pavilion was very much in question. Well, it really wasn't in question, it's not usable, but not everybody understood that. There were a bunch of cease and desist orders issued, I had to come in front of you, a few other boards, take my medicine, we had to pay some fines, that, in all honesty, that's kind of water under the, you know, under the bridge or over the dam at this point in time. This board's not concerned tonight, I don't think, should be concerned tonight, with past violations that have been essentially compensated. But what we have here is, we have this pavilion that cannot be used right now. This board was kind enough in August, I think, of last year, to give the Ag Society a one-time exemption, so that they could use this for the Guilford Fair, and on behalf of the Guilford Fair, I express my appreciation for that. But as we stand here tonight, sit here tonight, this pavilion cannot be used, really, at any, any point in time, until we get your approval to do so. So what I'm here to do tonight is to ask for your approval on a permanent basis for this pink building. And, and I think that it's, I think it's important, I think it's very important, and I think it's going to become obvious why it's important, that everybody understands that that's really the only issue that's in front of this commission tonight. We are not in any way seeking to change any of the uses from 1989. I think in an earlier application, if I'm correct, I think it was one that was withdrawn, there was some language in the application that suggested that the Ag Society wanted to expand the possible uses of what I'll call the fairgrounds. And that is, by the way, I think everybody knows that, but the property we're talking about here is generally what I would call the Guilford Fairgrounds. We're not here tonight looking to make any change to those uses. And I think that any discussion of uses may take you down a path that will be unproductive, but I'll leave that to your, to your consideration.
Counselor, do you mean that the uses won't be affected by the pavilion?
That's correct.
So the Ag, the Ag Society won't use the pavilion?
That's a different question.
Because the pavilion wasn't there before.
That's correct.
And they were using the fairgrounds, and now it's there, and they're using it.
Well, what they.
So how, how does it not affect the uses if it is being used?
The uses are specified in exhibit one, limited to agricultural fairs, craft shows, auto shows, and similar activities of nonprofit nature. With or without the pavilion, that's all they can do. If they don't have a pavilion, they put up a tent, and that's what they used to do. Right now, the pavilion occupies a fair amount of space, and because of the intensity, if you will, of the use at the time of the fair, they couldn't put up a tent someplace else, because the tent would have gone right in this area here. So, the pavilion is a replacement for what had in the past been a tent. But the pavilion cannot be used for anything, not for the Guilford Fair, not to sell popcorn, not to collect water, not anything, it just, it cannot be used at all. But it's important that, it's important that you differentiate the use of the building from the uses permitted under the special permit.
But a tent is interchangeable with the pavilion?
I believe that that's a fair statement, yes. Okay, does that answer your question?
Well, I'm just, I'm surprised that they would need it if a tent was interchangeable with a pavilion.
Well, for, for many years, as I understand the history, for many years, they used tents, and the pavilion was a permanent structure that was probably better than a tent, probably cheaper than a tent, probably made a lot of business sense to them, so they wanted to put up a building. Now, I'm not going to stand up here and say that they shouldn't have come in front of you to get permission for that building, but, you know, the tent and the pavilion are interchangeable in that sense, and I suppose, frankly, I suppose one of your options tonight is to deny our application, to require them that they take the building down, in which case the tents will go back up, and everything that they're doing legally yesterday, or everything they were doing legally yesterday, will be done legally tomorrow, without the benefit of the pavilion.
And that's the only option that you see for this commission?
What?
To either approve it or order it to be torn down?
I'm not that far into my presentation yet.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll let you get to it.
Okay. Well, anyway, in the, in the summer of 2014, and at the belated, but at the suggestion of Mr. Bauer, there were a series of meetings between myself, I hosted most, I think all of them, a group of neighbors, some of whom, maybe all of whom are here tonight, and a group of three or four members of the Ag Society. I want to say we had three or four, possibly five, meetings, and I would characterize those meetings as, as productive. We were making, in my opinion, we were making progress towards a, an acceptable resolution. And what was on the table at that time was the, these neighbors, to the extent that they were authorized to speak for the neighborhood, and that's, that's not a given by any stretch, but there was a sample of the neighbors. If we had been successful, the hope would have been that the neighbors would have dropped the opposition to the structure, and the agricultural society would have voluntarily relinquished some of the uses that are permitted under the special permit that exist today, or clarified what those uses were. There was some, there was some give and take, and there's nothing wrong, really nothing wrong with that type of deliberation. But, to make a long story short, those negotiations broke down, you could ask 10 people why they broke down, people would blame, refuse, whatever, they broke down. The selectmen then got involved, to the best of my knowledge, and I'm reporting this, I don't know this to be true, but what I understand is that the town selectmen then got involved and tried to re-energize these discussions and facilitate some resolution. I believe there were a couple, three or four meetings, I did not participate in any of them, and as far as I can tell, what was reported to me was those discussions also didn't lead to any satisfactory result. So, here we are, roughly a year and a half after September of 2013, we have a building that's up, that maybe under one interpretation is not legal, never a great thing for me to say, standing up here, but certainly isn't permitted to be used. And we have the event season coming again soon, and it's time for me, on behalf of my client, to fish or cut bait. So, I brought back in here, in front of you tonight, a re-application, in a lot of ways, it is a September 2013 redox. I'm asking tonight that the building be approved. Again, will fall on my sword and acknowledge that it's an after-the-fact approval, and I know how everybody feels about that, but I'm asking for approval of the building with no change in the uses, when I'm trying to expand them in any way, shape, or form, and candidly, I don't think it's within the purview of the commission to contract them, you know, suas fonte, if you will. So, what I'd like to do now is kind of focus your attention, if I can revert, direct your attention back to exhibit three, I've given you excerpts from three cases, and to be fair to your counsel, I sent this document to your counsel, but I don't think I sent it to him until about 5:00. That, I had spoken to him earlier in the day, told him that I would send him this, but then my day went off the tracks, and I didn't get back to the office until 4:30, so there is a good chance that he has not had a chance to review this, and if, if good practice says, if you're given that chance, I certainly have no objection to that. But the important part of these three cases is this, that the conditions that, and I think, Mr. Corby, I think this goes to your, your question, it kind of speaks to your question about what are the commission's options. In my opinion, and I hope that it's an educated opinion, one option is to approve the building with no conditions, one option is to deny the application, in which case the building has to come down, and the third option is to approve the building but attach conditions to it. And what, in my opinion, what this board is legally authorized to do, given Gay, and given Kobeluk, and given Beckish, you can attach conditions, but the conditions that you attach have to be related to the application that's in front of you. Now, when I was a younger lawyer, I had a case over in Clinton where I represented a developer who was putting in a subdivision, and there was a great deal of neighborhood opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission over in Clinton granted the subdivision, approved the subdivision, and imposed a condition that if anybody, if any neighbor complained that their drinking water had gone bad for the next five years, my client would have to provide them with bottled water. Not, that condition is unrelated, or it addresses a condition unrelated to a subdivision application. The case went to court, the commission changed attorneys, and the case wound up being settled. But the case law is clear, you can attach a condition to something, for example, you could say that in this zone, a building, and I don't, I don't have memorized your regulations, so let's say that in this zone, you can have a building that's 40 feet tall. You could say that because this is a special permit, you can have a building, but it can't be more than 30 feet tall, because we're concerned about view lines from cliffs and bluffs and so on and so forth. That condition, which relates to the height of the building, in my mind, is directly related to what's in front of you, which is the application. I'm not, it's, it's my opinion that a condition that says, well, you can build a building, but you can only use it for worship services. I don't think that that, and maybe I shouldn't use worship services, because that introduces all other, you can have a building, but you can only use it for food service operations. I'm not so sure that that condition would be directly related to the matter in front of you, which is, is the building okay or not? So, those three cases are presented, my client's very anxious to get a decision, but I think in fairness, if Mr. Andrews has not had an opportunity, and I suspect he hasn't, this board should certainly have the benefit of his counsel before ruling on it, so unless you're going to just turn me down no matter what. But I think that, I think that no matter how much of a, how much of a rush I'm in, I think that you're in fact, and should be able to make a considered decision. So, that's what I have for you tonight. I would like, I would frankly like to get tonight, or when you are able to make it, an up or down vote on the building. What events have been held, haven't been held, I don't think are germane, that's my opinion, but you can hear testimony on that or not, your option. Well, the application in front of you tonight is simply to approve the building that admittedly was built without a permit. Will it be allowed to stay? Does it need to come down? Can it stay with conditions that are legally appropriate and enforceable? And that's it.
What types of conditions might be legally appropriate? For this particular special permit amendment?
I think Mr. Andrews would answer that more honestly, for your, from your perspective, but I think the example I gave you, which is, you know, things related to building structure, building size, building height, and so on, I think that that's clearly germane.
So you think that it would be appropriate for this commission to order the Ag Society to shrink the building? The existing building?
Well, that, that sounds a little bizarre, but had this application come to you in the.
I didn't say bizarre, you said.
Well, I did, no. Had this application come to you in the proper form, in the proper order, the building wouldn't have gone up, and I would have come before you with a 1,000 square foot building, and you might have said, we'll approve a building, but it has to be 800 square feet. So, you know, but for the fact that the building is already there, to say that, well, I'll tell you what you could do, you're not going to shrink the building, take it down and put up a smaller building. That'd be an enforceable condition, in my opinion.
So there's no condition that would be appropriate, coming from this commission, that would not be tantamount to ordering the agricultural society to tear down this pavilion?
I'm not prepared to say that.
You can't think of any condition that might be imposed by this commission as a condition of approval, as an amendment to this special permit, that would not be the same as us telling them to tear it down and do it over?
Well, it's certainly, in my opinion, it would be not a valid condition to say you can only have this if you no longer have craft fairs.
Okay. So that's, that's the opposite of the answer to my question. I was wondering if there was a condition that you think would be appropriate, that would not be the equivalent of an order to tear it down?
Well, I, I don't. Well, I don't, off the top of my head, but in all honesty, I'm presenting my application as, I'd like you to approve the building, which is there, and approve it as it is, frankly, without conditions. That's what my application is. If anybody on the commission has conditions that they think are appropriate, they'll leave it be acceptable to me, to the neighbors who are potential appellants, if the thing was approved, and, you know, the conditions could wind up eventually being tested in court. But off the top of my head, other than the simple examples I gave you, I mean, I am stuck with the hand that I was dealt, for better or worse, and that is that there's a building that's there. And, you know, that's not the most comfortable position to be in, but there is a building, it is there. I'm asking that it be approved. And I should correct something. You talked about a modification of a special exception permit. I would agree that the word modification applies, but only in the most technical sense. We're not changing very much about this special exception. Special exception does permit buildings to be built, but we do need to come in and get approval. The fact that no approval was granted, yes, there's a modification in that sense. But we're not expanding or changing the permitted uses that are permitted under that special permit.
Do you have any cases for us that relate to modifications of special permits?
There aren't too many cases on this particular issue as it stands. Give me a second. I think that Kobluk was a special permit. Yeah, Kobluk case, second paragraph on page two. The appellate court ruled that the validity of conditions attached to a zoning approval must be returned on a case-by-case basis, and noted that a key determinant in whether a condition to a special permit is valid is that condition's relationship to the action sought by the applicant. The action sought by the applicant is the approval of the building. So the conditions that you would attach should be relevant to the approval of the building. So the Kobluk case, I mean, I didn't bring it with me tonight, but Chuck, I'm sure, could research that and give you his input, that would be more, certainly treat us more objective than what I would tell of the case.
Just the building, not how the building is used?
I thought the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, just the building, not how the building is used?
When you say how the building is used, what do you mean by that? Because I'm not sure I'm following.
The events and activities that occur inside it.
I'm going to take a, I'm going to do something I really don't like to do, and that is take a really firm position on something. I think that any change to the uses, unilaterally imposed by this board as a condition, would be immediately appealable and be a successful appeal. But that's my honest opinion.
Including the use of this pavilion that we could otherwise order torn down?
Well, we seem to be arguing as opposed to questioning and answering.
Oh, no, that's a real question I was really asking.
My problem is, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I'm understanding the point you're coming from. I'm not saying you cannot condition your approval. I'm just saying that the conditions you attach, and I'm trying to give you evidence of conditions that work and conditions that I don't think do work. If what you're saying is, we'll grant you, we might grant you the use of this pavilion, but not if you have car shows. I don't, I'm not sure that that would pass muster.
Thank you. So I'm going to go.
Well, I thought, I thought part of the reasons we had special permits was that there was a reason, there's, there's, that, that when we have a special permit, it allows for public, it requires a public hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And at that public hearing, we take all kinds of information from the public about, about the permit, and we often take questions about uses and, you know, lighting and all the stuff that's on that property. And I've always thought that we had the right to specifically, based on input of the public, say, okay, you can put a building up, but you've got to have the lights off at 11:00.
He's saying he doesn't want that.
No, I honestly, I
And so, and so for, so either I misunderstand our role here, or there should be no reason for public hearing, because it seems to me to say, okay, it's a special permit, it's in a neighborhood, and they want to have bands four nights a week, to tell me that I can't say, okay, you can have the building here, but you can't have bands four nights a week. I don't understand how that, how you get that out of this decision.
Well, I apologize for not thinking of the use, or the lights-off provision. I think that the lights-off provision, the building cannot be used after a certain hour at night, lights or no lights. I think that that's probably a perfectly acceptable condition, because it's related to the structure itself.
I think that Tom is asking for a much broader flexibility.
That's okay.
All right, I'm good too.
Attorney Cronin, I had a quick question. You said, you spoke a little earlier, how there were some negotiations, a little back and forth, and you've had a few meetings, and there were some conditions that were thrown around. And you were willing to, if they were, you would give them some conditions if they let you have the building. You sort of represented to us that it's either conditions related to the structure or bust at this time. And I want to know, if they were to say today, at tonight's hearing, that there are some conditions that they have, are you willing to sort of try to work something out today to get a result, or you have no interest in hearing the conditions that they would like to, or your clients have no interest in hearing the conditions?
Well, we had, as I say, I think, three or four meetings that I was at, and I think there were at least three meetings that I was not at, and we weren't able to bridge the gap. I mean, we had, we had proposed, we had proposed trying to bucket events into single-day, multi-day, big events, small events, so that you had four buckets. And what number of events? We were talking about limiting, trying to come up with some limits on the numbers of events. So one of the problems we have here is that depending upon what neighbor you talk to, they like this event, but not this event. They don't like this event, they like this part of that event, but not this one. So it's impossible to come up with something that's going to meet all of the requirements of all of the neighbors. So what I really don't want to do is, I don't, I don't see how I can go out of here with the same decision I got in September of 2013 and be back here again in a year and saying, we tried to meet and couldn't get anywhere. I mean, I'd rather get denied and let the court sort it out and, you know, spend my wills for another two years.
Well, would you agree that we have a right to have your building, have the building torn down?
Yes.
Okay. So you wouldn't have the court sort that out?
No, I think, I think that if, I mean, I'm not going to give up my right to appeal, but I think that if you had the building, you know, took the building down, your defense would be that it was built without a special permit.
So
Or approved from the zoning commission, which might require a special permit.
Just trying to figure, so you would rather have us have the building torn down than implement some conditions on the building?
I didn't say that.
You're putting us in a difficult situation, because if we put a condition on it to make, you know, it more reasonable for your client, then you're going to sue the town, and the town is going to spend an exonerated amount of money defending it, action.
Let me try to say this again. I have not stood in front of you tonight and said you cannot put conditions on this. What I'm saying to you, and let me say it indelicately, I think you're going to hear a lot of, it'll be called testimony, about, well, you can't have this event, and you can't have this event, and we don't want to have this event. I think if you put a condition, we'll give you the building, but only if you don't have this event and this event. And if your conditions limit or contract approved uses that are presently permitted, I don't think that, I don't think that that would stand muster.
I think it might be helpful to hear some of the conditions.
I think we ought to know at the other side.
Yeah, to hear something. Unless you've got more to say right now.
No.
Can I ask one question for Mr. Cronin?
Sure.
Is the distinction you're making as to conditions, is it that you can allow conditions regarding the building, but not the use, use of the property?
That's correct.
Okay. I didn't know if that was it, or if it's, you can put conditions on the use, but it can't be for the use of the entire property. It can only be for, you can put a condition on the use of the building?
I think you can. For example, when Mr. Cost said, you know, you can use the building, but the lights have to go off by such and such an hour. I mean, that's, that's a use type of limitation, but it relates to what's in front of you, which is the building itself.
Okay. So you can put conditions on the building and the use, but it can only relate to the building that, square footage or whatever, it's there, what happens there, not the entire property, which is so many acres.
So a way to limit activity in the building would be to say, okay, you can't have, all the electricity's got to be off at 5:00 in the afternoon?
I'm just trying to understand what he's, what Mr. Cronin's argument is, and I think that's, because at one point, you were suggesting that only conditions on the building itself and not the use. But I think maybe you're saying that it's the building in use, but it can only relate to this building itself and not the entire property.
You're, I appreciate your distinction, Chuck. Your distinction as to the use of the structure
Correct.
As opposed to the use of the property is, I think, a very helpful
Right. That's, I think Mr. Corby, when he first asked you, was, you know, if the building's going to be used.
And I apologize for misunderstanding, but yes. Are greater latitude for conditions on the use of the, of the structure itself, on the use of the structure. But I don't think there's a lot of latitude for use restrictions on the rest of the property. Not as part of this application.
Could you define a little further what you mean by activities of nonprofit nature? They have to be a 501(c)(3).
I don't
There's got to be some kind of a definition of what you mean, if they don't make money because they're managing
They didn't make a profit.
If they make a profit, that's their engineering.
That is, that is from 1989. I don't know what the Planning and Zoning Commission meant in 1989, but I think a reasonable
Maybe this is a good time to define it.
A reasonable interpretation of that today would be a 501(c)(3) type of operation. I believe that, my experience with the Ag Society is, the only event that has fallen outside of that has been the, what's sometimes called the Renaissance Fair. I believe that Oktoberfest, the Lobster Fest, the Guilford Fair, the car shows, the high school races, and so on. Now, for example, if Life, Life Links has a race down there, I don't know whether Life Links is actually registered as a 501(c)(3), but I don't think that anyone would suggest that they're a for-profit operation. I don't, I just don't know whether they have official 501(c)(3) status or not.
So who makes that decision?
Us.
Mr., who can use it? You're saying specifically a nonprofit nature? And that opens it open to interpretations?
Well, in the past, that decision has been made by the Ag Society, and frankly, last year, we got into a great deal of trouble because they had rented out to the Renaissance Fair, and the Renaissance Fair was not a non-for-profit operation.
But that wasn't just last year, that was three years running?
That may be. I mean, my involvement was, goes back a year. And, you know, somebody, somebody wasn't minding the store when it was first approved. They did it last year, so when it comes up the next year, they do it again. Last year was a problem, they got a cease and desist order, and there were substantial fines paid.
I'd also follow up with Tom, I want to hear from the public.
Any other questions?
Okay, so, are you done with your presentation, sir?
I am, sir, now.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to ask questions?
I think the neighbors may have, some of the neighbors may have counsel here.
Oh, really? Your neighbors have counsel?
Have you asked for opposition?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Attorney Marjorie Shansky, and I'm here on behalf of Kathy Mack and Pete Perugini of Field Street. And I'd like to take you 180 degrees in my conversation room.
Can you speak up, please?
I will. Thank you. I can project. And I want to start, this is not where I intended to start, but it has immediacy, because Attorney Cronin just provided it. In his comment at the end of his white paper, that the commission would not have the authority to approve the structure subject to the limitation that the society discontinues certain events already authorized by the existing special permit. Let me state with some clarity that nobody is here to seek to shrink those events that are, quote, "already authorized" by the existing special permit. But we have a conundrum in that it is our experience as neighbors to the site that there has been a repetitive exercise of events that are not within the authority of the prior permit. So conflating now the beginning of my actual statements with these statements, this application is incomplete. This application is incomplete in a manner that deprives the commission of enough information to actually meaningfully rule on it, for exactly the reasons that the commissioners who were querying Mr. Cronin have identified. We've been given no information of the nature that is required to be provided to you under your regulations governing special permits. And under Section 273-99 of your regulations, any enlargement, extension, moving or structural alteration of a special permit use, or any building or structure in connection therewith. We have, one, now two permits that were built without zoning sign-offs, without building permits. This is an illegal structure. You may have ratified the other one last year. We have an illegal structure for which they're seeking permission, but for which no information regarding use has been provided. And if, if counsel wants to say, well, we have the permitted uses, then let us say that we are limited only to those uses, and moreover, we promise, or the commission can explicitly condition that not included, let us reform the existing permit to the extent that we have to, as a matter of practice and in recognition of the conduct of the applicant, to state explicitly what is not within the ambit of what has been approved. Because we get a, we get a clue from that March 14, 2014 application that was withdrawn, in which the agricultural society sought to expand the uses, or to amplify the expression of what was permitted in a way that included reunions, weddings. They reformed the language to suggest that even the nonprofit requirement might not be so important. Musical events stood alone instead of as accessory uses. Those are very subtle, but very important information for the affected neighborhood. The affected residential neighborhood, the affected historical residential neighborhood. Community character is written all over this application, but we are given no information. So my first request to the commission would be to send the applicant to the drawing board to submit to you a full application that describes the uses that they intend to put the pavilion to. And the commissioner's observation is well taken, that if the structure that we're addressing this evening, the pavilion, is the one without walls, then indeed, its use in connection with the grounds is a very real possibility. So can we really only be looking at the structure itself? Isn't it really all of a piece? Isn't that really what your regulations intend? And when it's used for a jazz festival, where the music is not accessory, it is the main point. Multi-day jazz festivals over two years, correct? Where is that in the 1989 permission? So it is my perspective from your regulations, that your scope of review is much broader than has been presented to you, because it is a special permit, because the who, what, why, where, and when are the are the rudimentary requirements of evaluating the propriety of a special permit, and that modifications are covered in your regulations by application process. Now, I'm going to go back to the beginning, if I may. And I have a letter, not a witness. This is the original. I don't know where they wrote that.
That goes on there.
It's a copy for you. I have a copy for you. Welcome? Welcome? I got it. Please tell the page here. Who's Mr. Cronin? It will not be a surprise to you. I have my letter dated January 6th of this year, to which is appended, unsurprisingly, a copy of the 1989 special permit, to which we are all much attached, and then a copy of my letter to the commission from 2013. And, you know, I'm interested that Attorney Cronin did not see it necessary... Because I'm sure he's seen it. It's in the file. It's been in the file for a good year. Respond to any of the thoughts expressed in that letter because most of them remain germane this evening, particularly as they relate to the requirements under your regulations and the factual background and the considerations that are brought to bear in this application. And in the conclusion to that letter, I talk about proposed conditions. I mean, one of the things that has this applicant sought to embark on changes to this site. Why wouldn't there be a site plan application that would accompany it? So that the location of lights, if there were going to be any permanent lights, would be verified, photometrics would be involved. Vegetative buffers that would protect the adjoining neighborhoods would be on the table. Those are things that... The addition of buildings to a site that are going to be used as a whole would be appropriately before this commission, but none of them have been provided. None of those things have been provided. I want to say a word about negative externalities, the noise associated with uses, including the use of this pavilion, including the use of this pavilion that could be used in a broader way with the grounds of the fair. Noise, lights, traffic. The negative externalities bear on property value. In my experience, and I'm not an appraiser, I'm just a lawyer, but I've done my share of tax appeals, and I hear, I've heard for a number of years, appraisers talk about the background value, the background factors that are already reflected in value. So my client's property, the neighborhood properties, already reflect proximity to the fairgrounds and the level of activity that has been going on. Although, I don't know with respect to the unauthorized activities that may impose a higher degree of negative externality than was historically there and which, you know, the future is uncertain because we have no expression of either restraint or compliance. There is a point at which negative externalities will adversely impact property value. And to that extent, and I apologize, I only have one copy because the rest of them are on my copy. A letter from Mark N. Doe, who is a real estate appraiser, a general certified appraiser, talking about the negative externalities associated with the use of the fairgrounds and the factor by which property values can be affected by an increase in those activities. And he quantifies it, albeit I grant you, it's hypothetical. But it's hypothetical because we have not heard enough from the applicant. We have not heard enough from the applicant with respect to, gee, we're not going to pay the fine this year. We're going to comply. Because compliance is how we get peaceful coexistence with the residential neighborhood. Paying a fine is supposed to be a disincentive to noncompliance. And if the applicant is more willing to pay the fine than comply, then it's an ineffective book. I also have a letter for the commission, also only one copy, from another neighbor, Mr. Philip Schaper, for the consideration. There are limits that attach to use of the town green that may be useful for the commission to review in connection with considering what to do on this application. And I think the most poignant, from our perspective, has to do with the limits of how long music can be performed. So that it is not a day-long affair necessarily of listening to amplified music, but on the green, there's a two-hour limit. That is a constructive limit. It might be possible to... And if, you know, if the commission were to deem it appropriate to unduly narrow its review to the pavilion only, but to ask the applicant to register events with the town in advance of their occurrence so that somebody can at least know of their coming and assess whether they fall within the special permit. Because it's an unfair burden to the neighborhood to be saddled with events that are beyond the ambit of the permit and then deal with the noise as a result. The application is incomplete. I have some photographs for the commission showing a view of the fairgrounds and of the pavilion from the Woodfield Street property after the storm damage and showing why a vegetated buffer for that building would be appropriate and even probably within counsel's very limited view of appropriateness. Checking my notes, please.
Attorney Shansky, we agree that the Ag Society has to make money to survive, right? And that, in general, as a nonprofit, typically nonprofits engage in certain for-profit activities in order to support themselves. In this case, the Ag Society tends to, perhaps, make a profit on the fair in many years, but it also needs confidence in its revenue stream in the sense that by diversifying its activities and especially diversifying the times at which they take place, since they're an outdoor facility, that allows them to be more certain that they will remain in the black over time and be able to provide... I think it's fair to say that their main service, by far, to the town and perhaps to New England, is the Guilford Fair. And by engaging in these other... Certain other activities, they are able to spread their costs and their risks and develop alternative revenue streams. And those activities are just as likely or unlikely to make noise, whether or not they are of a for-profit or nonprofit nature, right?
I've identified at least four of the nature of those activities that are not within the ambit of the 1989 permit. And while I would concede for discussion purposes that the point you make is valid, then it reflects immediately on my initial observation. Let them bring a full application that seeks to recognize the uses to which they think the property needs to be put and in support of that application, bring in a real estate appraiser, a traffic engineer, and demonstrate, and demonstrate as any other special permit applicant with a place of public assembly has to prove that this is an appropriate place for the level of activity that they seek to introduce. But it is not okay to simply say, "Yeah, it's hard for all of us to get by, therefore, we'll engage in an ad hoc sort of acceptance and cast a blind eye toward these sort of successive deviations from what is permitted." These are special permit uses. They are permitted uses that by their nature have to be evaluated based on their duration, intensity, frequency, and every other parameter so that we can assess to what extent we're willing to sacrifice the peace and quiet of a neighborhood to accept them. So I don't disagree with you at all. But then I think you have to, perhaps, leave an opening for agreeing that you need more information from this applicant.
When you make a reference to successive deviations, what you're talking about is a gradual development of additional activities across the past, perhaps, decade, perhaps, five?
I've only been in this periodically since last year, or 2013. But there have been a couple of jazz festivals. There have been a corporate event, a wedding, a family reunion just within the past year. And the Renaissance Fair is another example.
So you agree that the, for instance, the wedding and the reunion don't produce nearly the level of nuisance that the fair produces?
I wasn't invited.
Very clever. Nonetheless, the nature of the activity does not directly relate to the level of nuisance, particularly noise.
You know, that's a fair question, but I'm from New Haven, where Anthony's Ocean View, where there's a wedding an hour, has become quite a nuisance in that neighborhood. So when does it begin, when does it end? Don't you need to know that?
The landlord uses.
And it's also spelled out.
I have a question. If we were to... To me, it seems like everyone is supposed to be on the same page because Attorney Cronin represented that they want... Okay, Attorney Cronin represented that they want to abide by the special permit. And you just... Your goal is to have them abide by the special permit from 1989. And so if the Ag Society was willing to... Before an event, submit something to the town planner, would that... Would the neighborhood be okay with that to decide whether or not it complies with the 1989 special permit?
But didn't he say he's not willing to make that a part of this deal?
It was my impression that, right now, the 1989 special permit applies to the property.
It applies now.
Yeah. So I just want to know if that was something that Attorney Cronin was interested in doing, would that be something that would be a possibility for the neighborhood?
If it were a registration, or whatever the word was that you used, demonstrating its conformity with the condition. I don't think it's incumbent on the town to have to make an assessment each time. And by the time it's reported, it might be too late, and it'll be another Renaissance Fair situation. I think that the candor of the applicant in revealing to the commission what it seeks to do and what it wants to have permission to do is the part that's a little shaky here because we have experience that doesn't line up with what's on the table. We're just trying to fix that.
So my question is, if the Ag Society was willing to give a list of events that... Because I'm assuming that the Ag Society knows six months, eight months in advance, what events are going into... And I might be assuming wrong. But what events are going into or going to be happening at the location, if they were to notify and then have the town, you know, they could notify and say, "This is a not-for-profit," or "This is a car show," or "This is a craft show," and the town just checks it off. And if it's not one of those things, then the town planner can have a discussion with the Ag Society. Is that something that would resolve this issue?
Well, is this issue just this building?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out... I'm trying to, you know, get...
We already have the link.
Yeah.
No reason, we still have the information. But in discussion, I want to discuss this. We should get it told.
Theoretically, what you described is not unreasonable. The problem... Pardon apologies for the redundancy, is that we have a list in the 1989 permit that is sort of self-descriptive and should be self-enforcing. And then we have what's happened on the site, which doesn't line up. So can you elicit a promise through an application that says explicitly that that's what they're going to do, what the permit permits, and not exceed it? You know, let them bring that forward and follow it. I don't know that conditioning or having that condition result... I don't know if it's an effective condition. But you'd have to hear that from them.
Sure. So ideally, is what you're trying to have happen, the Ag Society come before us again and have them explain exactly what each one of the items on the special permit that was given in 1989 means to them and determine whether or not there's a negative impact on the community and then redetermine... Okay, so a misunderstanding what it is you want to have us decide?
This application, in my opinion, should include a... The statement of use should include actual uses, not just seek permission for you to give a blank check to the use of this building. What if it were used for the musicians to assemble so that the audience sat on the lawn? Why isn't the lawn, then, within your control to evaluate? Because music is only accessory under the 1989 permit, and they've been using it primarily. You need more information, that's all I'm saying. You know, we can discuss the nuances, but I'm not the applicant. It's them from whom you have to hear.
Attorney Shansky, I happen to agree with you that that was the absolute narrowest description of PDC powers that I have ever heard from an applicant. But is there a set of conditions based on... I mean, obviously, you've been involved to some extent with not just your two clients, but also probably other neighbors' interests as well. Is there a set of conditions that is appropriate to your clients that we could impose tonight and also approve the pavilion and decide that they don't have to tear it down and start over and come and ask permission? Tonight, so far, you've advocated essentially for a continuance and a clarification only, right?
Well, there's also denial and reapplication.
Denial and reapplication.
I would say this, and I hate to say this. If the commission would pass this, and I will take those of my clients who are keeping room to the hallway and caucus, I'm not... I am not equipped to hand off their claim by expressing a set of conditions to the commission without conversing with them.
Counsel, do you represent all the neighbors or do you only represent certain neighbors?
The attorney-client privilege.
Right, okay, so...
I'm sorry, can you hear that answer, please?
The attorney-client privilege precludes my answering that question.
Thank you, Ms. She mentioned two, though.
I certainly don't represent all the neighbors. I will say that, clearly.
It would be reasonable... It would be reasonable for us to think that there may be neighbors that may have other considerations that they would like that you wouldn't be able to communicate to us.
That is true. That is true. However, saying that... However, saying that, I would suggest that the core of why I can stand here, sort of impassioned, is because I think there's a real regulatory issue on the table about your jurisdiction, which needs to be a little full flower, more fuller flower than has been suggested to you, and that there are issues associated with this application that require review. But I'm sure that we can give you a list of proposed conditions that you can put in the hopper with whatever else you're thinking or not thinking. the hopper with whatever else you're thinking or not thinking, and we'd have you to do so.
But at the very least, you know, your point is well taken that we don't have a full application, we don't have a site plan, we don't have any traffic studies, we don't have anything except a pink building. So...
We do know that the traffic studies would be horrible because we have been to the fair.
Right. Everyone in this room is out in that traffic.
We've all conducted our own personal traffic study of getting to and from the fair.
We don't need to do that.
I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't maybe, you know, should or shouldn't.
But the point is well taken about, you know, screening and all the other stuff, we'd go with a normal application for this kind of statute. All right, are you done, ma'am?
Long since.
Wonderful. Okay, anyone else here to speak? Can you have a hand? Come on, Deb.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm not an attorney. I'm a neighbor.
Your neighbor.
And I'm a neighbor in favor of the pavilion.
Good, okay.
I've been a neighbor of the Guilford Fairgrounds.
Can we have your name?
Susan Weedy.
Susan Weedy.
Seven Paddock Lane. I, my condo overlooks the fairgrounds and has for, since 1988 when my husband and I purchased the property. One of the reasons we purchased the property was because of the open space afforded by the Guilford Fairgrounds. And the Guilford Fairgrounds have actually been there or moved from the green in late 1960s so that anybody who really bought or purchased property around there really should have known, or should at least have done their homework, to know that enjoying all this open space, that there was also a fair that was going to be conducted as well as perhaps some other activities. I know that Guilford Ag Society purchased the property in 1989, and at that time was issued a special permit, which I understood to mean 501(c)(3) EV sense. And historically, over the last 10 years, if the fair, the fairgrounds, the fair committee went back in their records, and they came up with a fact that for the last 10 years, approximately 10 events a year have been held of varying degrees of dates. In other words, some were lengthy, some were two hours, some were days. And it ended up being approximately 30 days out of the year that are used for events of all sorts. This, if you do the math, means 8% of the year there are activities there, and 92% of the year we have open space that is not, there's nothing going on. And it's a wonderful place to live. And as my husband once said, it's like having a green, a second green, but it does have parking. One of the things that I wanted to mention was that the monies for the purchase of the, of the buildings that were built came from a grant from the Guilford Foundation that was written by my husband and by Dr. Harvey Smith. And also that my husband and myself have set up a legacy fund for the support and preservation of the Guilford Ag Society because agriculture is such a basis of Guilford. And so it was through that that the funds came for the buildings. And I knew that the, that the Ag Society did apply for permit. I didn't know anything about a special permit, and in any event, I can see that that's an issue at this point in time. I'm well taken with the idea that the Guilford Ag Society, the Guilford Fair, is their main event. However, they have to be able to provide support themselves since it's a weather-dependent event. If they have three days of rain, they are not even going to begin to end up with luck. So they must supplement their income with Guilford events. Unfortunately, they did choose a three-year contract with a non-501(c), and that was the Robin Hood Festival. My observation was that in fact they were not aware of that limitation at the time, and in fact, it was not until the third year that anyone said anything. And the third year was this past year. I believe after many discussions with neighbors and also with the issues surrounding the 501(c) versus the non-501(c) or for-profit organization, that the Ag Society has in fact learned their lesson. They, they received a $2,500 fine for this last Robin Hood Festival, which is pretty steep for a not-for-profit organization. And I think they have truly learned their lesson. They realize now that their special permit is limited to 501(c)(e) events. I also would have to say that this year, as a result of the discussions with the neighbors, I have seen personally a great deal more sensitivity toward the neighborhoods. And I, I'm right across from the fairgrounds. I've walked right across the street from the fairgrounds. Debris, which was an issue, had been picked up promptly instead of sitting for a week or two. I know that they have worked to place some of the activities on given events and venues within the fairgrounds and proper themselves in order to minimize the impact of the noise on the neighbors when it's possible. A band is gonna carry as part of the event, but I have seen this for a fact, and it actually has been a very pleasant year, although there has been a lot of activity over there. So I really wanted to know, I want you to know, I, I did in fact submit a petition for the approval of the pavilion from 40 neighbors that live in Paddock, 100% of Paddock Lane, by the way, Rollwood and Lever's Lane, supporting the approval of the pavilion. We like living there, and we don't find that the small price that we pay is that bad for 8% of the year. And it does seem to me that, given the fact that I think the, the intent is not to change the permit usage, but merely to approve the building, that we ask you to approve the pavilion. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question before, Sotem? You, you represented that 100% of Paddock Lane, 100% of Lever's Lane is...
No, 100% of Paddock.
Do you have anything with you that would show that, or?
I submitted a petition, I dropped it off at P&amp;Z on... It's in the file.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good, thank you.
Anything else?
No, good, thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Can a favor or a candidate?
Let this gentleman come up, and then I'm gonna, everyone will get a chance.
A Guilford citizen moved to the town...
Could I have your name?
Peter from Anobius, I'll give you his phone. It's one of my friends.
Address, please.
Nine Goal Drive. And I have no association to Guilford, therefore, just by chance I happen to sit over there, so I won't have any... I'm just a simple person. Tell me where I'm wrong. They'd ask, can they use the building or not, the pavilion? They're not changing anything else. This is just, I'm just, what I heard tonight. So we spent over an hour talking about it. They haven't asked for anything different. They could use a tent, or they could use a pavilion, same thing. They built a pavilion, it's architecturally going with the theme of the other buildings, so it looks kind of nice. In fact, several of the homes on Whitfield are just now sold for over a million dollars, so real estate's doing pretty well as neighbors. So tear it down and put up a tent and just keep doing the same thing, or use the pavilion. I say, this is the kind of thing, just a simple observation, that if you say, "Tear the, tear that pavilion down and use a tent," one day this would be in a political cartoon or a little piece saying, "Government," you know. I mean, tell me, I don't understand. They're not asking for anything else, just saying, "Can we use the pavilion or not?" That's all my question is. It's crazy. So they use a tent instead.
Sir, you're referring as "we," aren't you? You're not in any way related to them?
No, nothing. Just came because I received a certified mail, I said, "Gee," that... And so that's the point. All the other stuff is tangential, which is, can we use the pavilion or not? That's all they seem to be asking. And if not, they'll use a tent and keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. You're up. You're up. Brief, deep, you can do it. Tell us your name.
Well, I'm Kathy Mack, and I'm her lawyer, but I, I moved to Guilford in 1997. And when I first moved to Whitfield Street, I checked the 1989 special permit to see what would be allowed next door. And it said, as you will see on your documents, that the uses of the property shall be limited to agricultural fairs, craft shows, auto shows, and similar activities of a non-profit nature. And indeed, I lived there for 10 or 10 years, and, or, I've lived there for maybe 17 years, but in the first few years, there were dog shows, there were horse shows, there was the Halloween tractor ride, there was, I don't know when the town fireworks started, but there were no large 10,000 people events being held. And then all of a sudden, there was the Jazz Festival, which was three days. I would say there were 10,000 people there each day. And, you know, I, I didn't go back to read the permit again, but it happened. And it happened again. And, and then, what, what happened after that? So there was the, I guess the Renaissance Festival was the next large event with also another 10,000 people coming on a day. And first, it was for two weekends, two summer weekends, then all of a sudden, it was three summer weekends, or spring weekends. And their earlier neighbor spoke, and she said that there were 30 days that there were events, but almost all these events take place between May and October. So that's six months. And if you enjoy your property mostly on weekends, the number of weekends, weekend days, is 48 days. So out of those 48 days, 30 days could have events. And if the events are allowed, and if there's no, if there's no condition on, for instance, as our lawyer spoke, the town green, the town, that's the selectment, it's just an example of what you do with a public space where lots of people want to come and use it, and what, but once again, the, the actual language for the town green says that music and announcements should not be heard on a budding property. And the regulations further go on to specify that the use of the public address systems will be allowed only to the extent permitted, specified in the permit. And what has been allowed to happen there, the loud events are the concerts that occur four, five or six times during the summer. Other events occur, but they don't have amplification or music that is amplified. So, so when you have, when you have these large events occurring, a Jazz Festival, a Renaissance Festival with a bagpipe, and it's occurring one weekend after another, you start looking at your special permit again. But I didn't. Not even then did I go and look at the special permit. It was not until the barns went up. I said, "Oh, there are barns." I went away and I came back and there were barns. And then, and then I saw one of the Ag Society members, and I said, "What will these barns be used for? They're beautiful." And then she told me how they were built and everything, and she said, "Oh, for weddings and family reunions." And this opens up a whole other can of beans, but I don't think they are asking for that now because that would violate the nonprofit section. But my concern is that the term agricultural fairs, craft shows, and auto shows, which is specifically stated in the 1989 special permit, it says, "The uses of the property be limited to agricultural fairs, craft shows, and auto shows." That is not happening. And if they want to argue that it's a similar activity to have a huge Renaissance Festival, I would be interested in that analysis, and maybe we could meet again to have that analysis set forth. Or how a Jazz Festival, three days long Jazz Festival, how that's similar to a craft show, or, and the, and the, the permit also goes on to say that any music should only accompany the, one of these three items or a similar item. So I think what has happened is these small uses have grown larger, significantly larger, thousands of people are... Now, I understand that, that they need to, to make money, and they have to have some large events, that economically they probably could not survive without large events. So when we had our conversations, we spoke about having large events. But our concept was, large events should be, should, should be limited. There should only be five large events that had over 10,000 people. And that, and that, and now, we were not speaking for all the neighbors, we were just trying to come up with something that we could go with, and perhaps can go with other neighbors. And that, to the extent that there was music involved, that, that was to prevent the traffic, and we have no traffic studies, but for a residential neighborhood in a historic district with windy little roads, to have more than that, to me, seemed too much. But I would be interested in what they find when they bring their experts. But the other issue is what kind of noise? And once again, we were willing to have five events that we're going to, but we wanted the noise in terms of music to be limited to two or three hours, not all day, not twelve hours starting at 10 and going to 10. So that the noise element should also be, be considered. And then the concept of having an Oktoberfest, which is actually a carnival, right after the September carnival, and carnival with rides and screaming and, and music, boom pop music, so you felt you were living in Germany and you could hardly sit on your porch. You know, it has nothing in common with agricultural fairs, craft shows, and auto shows. It is a huge, huge event and very, very loud, and that's specifically the kind of, kind of event that many, many towns do not permit in residential zones. And that I would hope we don't permit carnivals. And to the extent you do allow one, then there's no real limit in the special permit, and if we don't want to go ahead and revise the special permit, which I think there's a very good reason to do so, because I think once you've made a big change to the site plan, you could, you could say that you have to review the entire special permit. But to the extent that you, to the extent that you allow carnivals once, why can't there be carnival three or four times? And so then, all of a sudden, you have huge issues. And already you have huge issues if you don't put some type of conditions on the sound because the zoning regulations say that the neighbors, that there shouldn't be a nuisance to the neighbors. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Nice, very good. Anyone else? Anyone? Going twice? Last chance.
Yeah. Chuck, we just, we were wondering if you were interested in weighing in on... Ted.
Come on, have a little fun.
If we were interested or comfortable weighing in on any of the specifics, perhaps someone from town staff might be interested in describing our noise ordinance as it currently stands and how it pertains to the fair as well as the fireworks and perhaps Oktoberfest and perhaps other events.
Yeah, I, I think that in terms of, I mean, you guys got the tough question of having to deal this out. The legal question that was raised had to do with an issue of conditions. As I understand it, Attorney Cronin, he was saying, you know, approve it or deny it or limit the conditions to the specific building or perhaps the use in the building, but don't do it to the entire site. And I don't know if you're gonna get there. If you get there, and if you propose certain conditions that, then I would need to look at to see, I'd want to look at his case law to see if it's applicable and so forth. But if you're not there, there's no reason to pay me to spin my wheels on something that's academic. I mean, that's kind of, you know, but, but I'm happy to give you my thoughts, you know, whatever it's worth.
Chuck, can I ask you a question? If, if they were granted certain things by special permit, and then they changed the conditions of the permit by erecting other buildings, are they opening themselves up to reapplying for the whole permit and reintroducing everything to us? Is that something we can set ahead of us?
Well, they have, I mean, that, in other words, is the application before you, which I guess is for one building. Is that such, does that change the nature of the entire site?
Right, because they're increasing the...
So that gives you the right to go in and to...
Right, and relook at the whole thing. Is that something we can say we want to do?
I, that's a good question. I, I wouldn't give you a que... I mean, I know what their response would be, and I...
Right, I know.
And I know what the, you know, to me, the argument And I know what the, you know, to me, the argument is, how much does this one building really affect the entire uses on the site? In other words?
Well, if it affects it at all, it's changed the conditions of the original permit.
It's changed the, it certainly has changed what was granted under the original permit.
So I would like to, and I'm asking you as counsel, to advise us? Okay. I'm asking counsel to advise me and the rest of this board of whether or not the construction of this building outside of the permit now opens up the entire property to being looked at again for permit reasons.
And that's the question I was wondering if I was going to have to avoid, but maybe I would have to look at it. In other words, if you're at the point where you're inclined to an approval with conditions, then that's where that issue comes in. You could deny it. You could deny it because it was incomplete or because you don't, you feel doesn't meet the criteria, whatever. You could grant it, you know, with the same conditions, but would you want it? That's sort of the third option, grant it with conditions and impose new conditions, say hours of operation, limits on how much music at a time and all that stuff.
But that would only be that one building. What I'm asking is, can we look at the entire site again since they've added this building outside of us saying so?
Right. And I can't give you the answer tonight.
Right. I would love to have an answer to that question.
Can I clarify one thing? The, in 2013, whatever the date was, when you concluded, that application was received and considered. The commission at that time approved a modification to the original 1989 special permit to allow the so-called barns, the green building, and to also allow the pink building. But there was a condition of that special permit modification, which said that the pink building, what we're calling the pavilion, could not be used, or could only be used through the end of, whatever the date was, through the end of 2013. So what their applicant is actually asking for now, as I understand it, is for you to eliminate that condition from the special permit approval that was granted in 2013.
I got that.
So it's a little bit narrower than a special permit to allow the pavilion. Because in a sense, you did allow the pavilion in 2013. You just said it could only be used through the end of 2013. And that's the time that you were also actually considering, if I recall correctly, the issue of a site plan, the adequacy of the site plan and that particular issue. I don't recall whether there was a waiver granted on the site plan or not, but that was when you actually considered the two buildings being proposed.
And let me go back to my memory. If I remember correct, and my memory is shot, but my memory is that we had the Guilford Fair one week away and our decision was going to stop the fair if we didn't say yes.
I'm using that building.
Right. There was something that?
That actually was, that was actually, that was actually?
That was the second. I remember thinking that was the last time.
Yeah, what George talked about when Ray was?
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, we keep on coming back to the same issue.
Yeah, I know.
And I really would like to, I'd like to know if we can just look at the whole thing once and for all and say?
Okay. I, that clarified. This isn't an application, a site plan app, or to modify a special permit. It's, well, it's to modify a condition of approval that limited it, that required to a certain time period. So it's, it's not, it's an application to modify a condition. Is that what it is?
I think so.
Here's the, I mean, to me, the issue, the reason this is the way it is, is because of the violations of the use of the property. And we were trying to figure out a way to cause the people that live there and the fair committee to get together and come up with a solution so that we didn't have to be the bad guys. In fact, Ray said in one of the meetings, "You need to help us here because we're going to end up making a decision and somebody's not going to be happy." I remember him specifically saying that. So the issue gets down to, to me, the issue gets down to, if they want, I can see them asking for permission to use, have that building back for them. The point is though, that they have to do what the special permit says, says they have to do. And if they don't do that, what's our remedy?
Water infected all our day time, is it?
Let me also, let me add one other thing, which is also, it's important testimony. Every time there is an event proposed at the fairgrounds, lobster fest, Renaissance Fair, whatever it is, they make an application to Town Hall South or permits.
They do that now.
They do that now. And for every one of these activities, almost every one of them, they submit an application and we, the zoning office, reviews it and approves it or disapproves it. So all of these activities, the jazz festival, the Renaissance Fair, I don't know about the particular weddings that you've referred to, but the lobster fest that I'm intimately familiar with, all of them get a sign off by us saying they're okay. Usually the things we're worried about when we get these applications, or that we've been worried about in the past when we get these applications, are building permit related things like health department, you know, is the food service going to be inspected? Is the electrical, you know, put in properly? We have been, in all honesty, been very liberal in our interpretation of what agricultural fairs, craft shows, auto shows and similar activities of a nonprofit nature, we've been very liberal in what that means. And what has happened over the years is that the extent of the activities has grown and they've become more intense. And gradually over a period of time, we've come to a situation where neighbors, and I'm one of them, are very concerned about the extent of the noise, traffic and other activities that occur on the weekends, in particular during the summer, and sometimes disturb your peace and enjoyment of your own property. But we have been very liberal, especially in interpreting the issue of, you know, similar activities. I mean, Rotary Lobster Fest is clearly, you know, a major event. Is that a, is that an agricultural fair, craft show or auto show? The Lobster Fest?
So, so should we take the?
Jazz Festival clearly violates, this is expressly prohibited, an event that's a musical event solely, that's not accessory to something else. That's clear, a clear violation. We can be, and I think we would be in the future, much stricter in our interpretation of whether a particular activity which has to get a permit every single time is an agricultural fair, craft show or auto show. Those are, that's pretty clear to me what those things are. Similar activities is not too clear.
So would it be a benefit to take the pressure off of you guys to bring every permit to us on camera and say, "All right, they're going to have a three-day jazz festival and the music's going to be on for 10 hours." Is that a great fair?
Where we might need your help is in interpreting what a similar activity is.
Right. And that's why I'm saying, I know a lot of times?
The other things are actually pretty clear.
I know a lot of times you're in the hot seat trying to make a decision like that. And maybe you shouldn't have to do that. Maybe?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish up.
Maybe we should take the, that's what we're for.
Two minutes. Right. Go ahead, tell them. I'm sorry.
I don't think we should be doing that personally because they're, the town is the permitting entity, not, not the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's what we have a staff for. But this says, I mean, I read this, "In similar activities of a nonprofit nature."
Yes.
So, so this means that if somebody had something that looked like a fair, what was for profit would be allowed under this special permit?
To my knowledge, until the Renaissance Fair came up as an issue, we've never asked Rotary to prove to us that they are in fact a non-501(c)(3) whatever the terminology is. We'd never asked the other applicants to do that. We always just assumed that they are nonprofit. The town, obviously, town events are clearly of a nonprofit nature, but is the fireworks a agricultural fair, craft show, auto show or a similar activity of similar nature? We've always, we've, we've said, "Yes, it is." Every time that that application has come in, we being the staff.
But what that, what that's done is it's caused some problems with the neighbors and a lot of times, you know, one of our roles is to take the pressure off of you guys.
If we'd said, "No, it's not permitted," that would have put up another set of pressures.
Right. All right. So we have to?
There's going to be pressure either way.
Can I say something? Those applications that George has referred to are typically electrical applications or something that has to do with hooking up wires and lights and things. They're not an application that comes to us and says, "We want to have a craft fair." So I have to read the application and say, "Okay, what are they doing at the fairgrounds for electricity? Oh, it says for the dog show."
Okay. We have to, we have to take a quick break. The tape's just about run out. We're not going to do any business, have any other discussion until the tape comes back on. So let's just take a break.
And then we'll finish item one.
And we are back. We have not transacted any business nor taken any testimony in the time that the cameras were off. We were just finishing up getting some information from our town council. I think we're at the point where we want to continue this. What would be a good date to continue this to?
March 4th.
March 4th. No, no, that's great. It's good to, another big night in front of us.
Next meeting, which would be the?
21st.
All right. So can someone please give me a motion to continue this to January the 21st?
Might explain because you understand that anything now that requires a public hearing requires a continuance for one meeting.
I just wanted to advise the chair that I'll be out of the country on the 21st.
Okay. So let's schedule a different date. Thank you, sir. When, the next one for February?
It'd be January 4th.
Counselor, February 4th work piece, sir?
Work fine.
Thank you, sir. All right. So can I get a motion to continue this to February the 4th?
So move.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, before we, yes, discussion, I would like to request from counsel advice on a few issues.
Which couns, oh, our counsel?
Our counsel. Yeah. And I mean, obviously, I'd like to request that the public and the various attorneys know about it also. Particularly the appropriateness of, the appropriateness of the following types of conditions. One, the appropriateness of a limit of number of days per year that the pavilion can be used. The appropriateness of a vegetative buffer requirement for approval or for the removal of this condition is really where we are, right? The appropriateness of vegetative buffer for the removal of this condition. And the appropriateness of a limitation on the number of days per year that the entire site can be used based on approval of, based on removal of this condition. The last one is obviously the most expansive and presumably the least likely to be appropriate. And if anyone else has any questions?
Well, I would just like to add that it would be helpful for the commission and maybe even the Ag Society to think about conditions that they would like to have, to agree to have implemented on the, are the conditions that they currently have, to either expand or decrease some of those conditions. And the neighborhood to come up with some conditions that they would be having as well. Just because today we talked a lot about what authority we do and do not have to act on this, this application for us. And I really need to be helpful to hear some actual conditions that both parties are comfortable with. Because as it sits right now, it seems as though some of the events that are happening, you know, can't actually happen under the 1989 special permit. And so I just think that would be helpful.
Yeah. In terms, in terms of the questions Mr. Corvier asked, my request would be that, what is the date for the continued hearing?
March 4th.
February 4th.
February 4th. So a week before February 4th, I would request that attorneys Cronin and Shansky submit to the commission and copy me their thoughts on the issues that have been raised. And those issues were the validity of a condition that would limit the number of days per years that the pavilion could be used, whether the appropriateness of a condition imposing a vegetative buffer, which I assume would be on the site, not just on the pavilion, but for the neighbors. The third one was the limitation on the number of days that the entire site could be used. In other words, and that was another general question, would as part of the commission's approval or decision on this application, would they be authorized to impose a condition affecting the entire site? I'd like to hear both of what you think, whether that would be valid or not, if you get that to me a week before. And then I think that's, that's it.
Okay. All right. Any other last minute discussion?
This is, this has been going on for too long and it's causing a lot of pain for the Ag Society and for all of the neighbors. This is Planning and Zoning Commissioner's worst nightmare in the sense that it is an unstoppable force meeting an immovable object. I don't think that I'm out of line saying that every single one of us is extremely supportive of the Guilford Fair and the Ag Society. And every single one of us is essentially here to protect neighbors from negative externalities. Sometimes those neighbors are neighbors. Sometimes those neighbors are companies or commercial interests that are affected adversely by the activities of those around them. But those are our goals. Those are actually the only three things that I truly consider as a commissioner are safety, environment and the various types of nuisance. Those are the only things that, that I really concern myself with. And here, we really have someone providing an invaluable service, causing pain and suffering to the people around them. And so I would really like it, obviously, if within the next month, you guys could come up with, with, could work something out because now we're truly down to it. But if you can't, ultimately, we're really going to have to adapt these two interests. And I know that no one's going to be completely happy. But I, I think, I, I think that the, this is the first time that a lot of these interests have been truly spelled out for me. And I, I would really like to end this sort of rolling pain that, that we have been inflicting on each other for a solid year now, where we don't really have a final comprehensive, workable situation. And I know that that's really tiring for a nonprofit and it's really tiring for?
Well, for us. I mean, we've been here a couple hours.
Yeah. But this is, this is how we live. It's not how you live.
We choose to do this.
And, and I want to be able to let you go home and I want to be able to come up with something that obviously is going to provide these things.
Good. Okay. Done? All set? All right. So we have a vote in front of us to continue this until February the 4th. We've had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Done. Item number two. Braun, David, Janine, 57 Rock Lane Map 10 Lot 70 Zone R2 Coastal Area Management Site Plan Reconstruction of Existing Dwellings, New Driveway and Patio, Section 273-91. Who do we have as our next victim?
Next.
Obviously, he's packing up.
He's packing.
He's packing his stuff up.
I just provide cover for him.
Cover fire.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Michael Harkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering located at 78 Wolf Hollow Lane in the town of Killmore, Connecticut. I'm here tonight on behalf of my clients, David and Janine Braun, for their project at 57 Rock Lane in your town of Guilford, Connecticut. Before I get started, I just want to say that I will make this presentation as brief as possible.
No, no, don't fill your house.
Please. For the record again, the engineering firm is Harkin Engineering, my firm located in Killmore, Connecticut. The surveyor of record? The surveyor of record is Mr. Eric Anderson from Eric Anderson Engineering and Surveying located in Guilford, Connecticut. And the architect of record is C.K. Architects again of Guilford, Connecticut. And Mr. Russell Campaign is here tonight to answer the architectural questions you may have. The project again is located at 57 Rock Lane. It's a very, very small lot. It comprises of .4 acres, around 6,000 square feet. It's only 50 feet wide and approximately 120 thereabouts feet long. Again, Rock Lane is located to the west of the property. The direct eastern side is facing Tuttles Point, Long Island Sound. There are two buildings on that site, the first being a seasonal cottage, which is closest to the road, the second being a full-time residence, which is more towards the rear of the building lot. What you see highlighted in yellow are the existing structures. What you see highlighted in pink are the proposed structures. Our proposal for this project is to tear down what's existing, virtually build within that same footprint, two structures that are FEMA compliant, raised up, lifted to the proper elevation. In the rear of the property or the side yard, you'll see a blue stone patio that we have proposed, and you see a cross-section of that patio. It's important to note that we've had a lot of discussions before this application has been sent to you and has been filed. In those discussions, we're with Mr. John Goucher at DEP. Because we are so close to coastal resources and Long Island Sound, we had a lot of go-back between what we can put out there for a patio, a porch, a deck, and what would be and wouldn't be considered a flood and erosion control structure. As you're aware, flood and erosion control structures are not allowed or permitted now along the shoreline. So what you see here is again, the acrid or virtually acrid, blue stone patio, which Mr. Goucher had previously said would not be a flood and erosion control structure, which is approved by him, sent up to them, and subsequently, you'll see, I believe in the file, that you have a letter from him or should have a statement from him saying that he is in favor of what we show on this here plan. It's also important to note that because the lot is existing non-conforming with building placement, this application required submittal to the zoning board of appeals. That has been approved by ZDA. It also required approval from the health department for the septic system, which is not being touched, which we do have approval for that as well. And lastly, we do have favorable comments from Mr. Goucher. So with that being said, I'd like to open it up to you, if you have any questions regarding this project.
I have a couple of letters in here. Please. I always want to start with, this is a letter dated January 7th, should be goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, from Kevin McGee, regarding coastal area management application. Oh, Kevin. Do you want to just talk about it? Or do you want me to just read it?
Keep going.
Okay, I'll go ahead. The applicant is looking to demolish and reconstruct two houses on the property along with the construction of a driveway and blue stone patio. The proposed house is located in a FEMA flood zone, AEEL 12, and immediately adjacent to a wave velocity zone, VEEL 14. The zone, the zoning board of appeals approved a 9.2-foot variance from the 20-foot coastal setback from a rocky shore front for the construction of the main residence. The configuration of the property with a seawall setback further from the adjacent properties make it, makes it more susceptible to erosive forces of the wave action. The further decreasing, the further decreasing the septic from the coastal resource as approved by the zoning board of appeals does not protect the public health, safety, and welfare of residences, residents, and is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning regulations and the State of Connecticut Coastal Management Act. The construction of the house closer, closer to the velocity zone is inconsistent to the Coastal Management Act based on the Connecticut General Statute 102A, 92B, 2F, in quotes, "to manage coastal hazard areas so as to ensure that the development proceeds in such a manner that hazards to life and property are minimized and to promote non-structural solutions to flood and erosion problems," end quotes. The 20-foot, 25-foot minimum setback creates a coastal hazard mitigation buffer that protects buildings, infrastructure, and people from the effects of storms and sea level rise. Waves observed during tropical storm Irene were deflected by seawall and patios through first and second floor windows causing a hazard to life and property consisting of buildings built to the current flood standards. Accordingly, I am concerned that if the proposed dwelling is damaged by a coastal storm, the owner might believe it necessary to construct a seawall to prevent future storm damage. However, structural solutions are not permissible to protect newly constructed inhabited structures because if prudent coastal management policies are followed, a new dwelling should be located and designed such that future protection should not become necessarily, necessary and unavoidable. In order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents, I recommend that the building be constructed no closer to the coastal resources than the existing structures are. If the commission allows the construction as shown, the building should be constructed to VE standards. The site plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected during the construction processes, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officers should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Two, all equipment and materials should be stored outside the flood hazard zone. Waste materials generated by the performance of work shall be cleared up daily and disposed of at and land site approved for the disposal of such material of land site. Did you guys receive this letter?
No, we didn't.
You may have a topic.
Yes, I'm sorry. I noticed it was dated January 7th, but when I started reading, it's like, oh, boy.
I heard the delivery of the documents.
Yeah.
Speak to a couple of others.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Okay. For the record, again, my name is Michael Harkin, professional engineer. First time I get to look at this and obviously get to hear it, so. One, I don't, I think the last page, the conditions of approval, I believe.
Yeah. Those are fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see. I mean, most of those items are listed on our plan. As far as the building, I'll turn that over to Mr. Campaign to talk about the V-zone and what the design standards of the physical building were. I'd just like to, I don't know, is the letter from Mr. Goucher?
No, Kevin, Kevin can certainly probably ask.
Okay, I do have it because he did send it to me. It's addressed to Mr. Kevin McGee because I sent emails up to Mr. Goucher just making sure that I touch base with Kevin. And I believe that Kevin could submit it. The Planning and Zoning Commission was CC'd on it.
No, we have, we have loaded it with Goucher as well. That was the first one. I have lots of, we have like four of those letters. Continue reading unless you want to.
Yeah, why don't you, you read that. I guess there's some, some difference of opinion between your town staff and DEP.
I'll do that. Mr. Chairman, I have a letter in the file from John Goucher from the, the office of Long Island Sound Programs at Connecticut DEP. John Goucher. Kevin, we have reviewed the above referenced proposal for consistency with Connecticut Coastal Management Act policies and have no comment for the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration. Please let me know if you have any questions or if you need any additional information. That's John Goucher, environmental analyst, 3.
And then there's another letter from Dennis Johnson. Just get it out of the way. Did you get today's letter from Dennis Johnson?
He didn't get that one.
Okay. Well, I think it's okay. The applicant does not propose to add more, more bedrooms within the two structures or increase habitable floor area space. Wastewater generated from the two existing buildings is collected in holding tanks. No septic system construction proposed or possible for the lot, the proposed building went away, was not conflicting with public code regulations.
And before I turn it over to Mr. Campaign, and I believe that Mr. McGee hinted at it in his letter, that we can't put any flood and erosion control structures in to protect this, this building. That was our whole point of touching base with Mr. Goucher prior to the submittal of this CAM application, to make sure everything that you see here is in conformance with the DEP standards for the CAM application. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Campaign to talk about, you know, the buildings themselves and the design criteria.
So first, I want to clarify one thing actually, in negotiating with Dennis, actually, this was a non-winterized seasonal cottage and this was a full two-story winterized cottage. He's allowing us to inventory all of the square footage and that is heated and actually allow us to have a portion of that heated in, or actually the whole building of the cottage be a heated non-seasonal and a portion then of the existing. So it's the same net square footage and he feels that's under the guidelines of the state health code, it meets that criteria, that we're not increasing occupancy of this. So I just want to clarify that because we are making a change of this to be, so if you see the lights on in the middle of winter, this has been approved through the health department, I want that clear. But to speak to the encroachment of two feet, basically, there is a holding tank that sits in a blasted hole right here under the driveway. We have to maintain our setbacks, so we can't get any closer, the building can't move any closer because of that septic requirement of maintaining that existing septic tank and existing setbacks from the two buildings. So we are kind of in a rock and a hard place, quite frankly, as to where we can go with this. And one of the things I will note that wasn't noted is we've actually reduced the total square footage of lot coverage on the site by over 200 square feet. And we've reduced the impervious surface by the 200 feet plus some additional storage that we're adding to the overall site with a pervious paver, pervious front entry and such diminished storm water in a much better way than it is now, which is basically bare rock that's running right into the water. So in, in giving back that 200 square feet, and this was the argument partially that was made to the ZDA, that did grant us a hardship for this particular site, saying that we could encroach on that setback, was that we were giving back in so many ways to basically better this and that the owner was justified in the investment they were making to better this property and meet more of the standards necessary, that they were allowed this one encroachment. And, and so they came down on the vote saying that basically they felt that the overall view of this and not the one myopic view of the particular setback was what was being reviewed and they, and they came down and concluded. Now, you're looking at it from a slightly different perspective, but you need to look at it, whether this two feet is going to have influence on your feeling that this will have a negative impact on the coastal area. So I think that the 200 square feet of less lot coverage actually more than justifies our reshaping the building to be more efficient in layout such that we can, we can reduce that square footage on the property and that's what the client actually felt was, was a better avenue. The other thing I want to point out is an earlier letter and an email from John Goucher speaks directly to this point. He says whether the V-zone boundary line extends slightly into the proposed dwelling or is afforded to a wave, will probably won't significantly impact the potential storm conditions of a structure placed as proposed would be subject to during a severe coastal storm. So he's basically saying directly, because this very question came up to him, that in his opinion in the DEP level, that two feet here or there, that the accuracy of these plans really doesn't have much to, you know, to do on that level. It's a broader picture of whether the, the house is going to sustain a storm. And lastly, we are still outside, we're still in the A14 zone, I'm sorry, the A12 zone. We are not in the V14 zone. We're still south of that line or sort of, I'm sorry, west of that line. So there is a buffer on that and he did also go through how we derive that line, the accuracy of that line, and actually, we use the most accurate available way of mapping that line and what's drawn. So I think that in my professional opinion, because I have lifetime liability on this house, I feel comfortable that we're more than meeting the, the conditions of the FEMA and the conditions of our local regulations on this. We're actually proposing both houses at 15 feet, which are three feet above the actual FEMA level and one foot freeboard above the V-zone that's adjacent to it. So we, and, and we are doing that within the constraints of the zoning. So I think that, you know, we've done some heroic measures to sort of make this fit between a lot of different criteria here. The one area that we're asking for a little bit of relief is this two feet closer to the water and I think it's justified in the overall picture. I think this is what you should be encouraging, you know, that, that these people that own these homes that, that are in real trouble with what to do with them, have to make significant investments in order to maintain them, you know, there has to be a given and taken balance associated with coming up with a solution that works for everyone. So that's, that's the presentation on it and, you know, and I do think it meets the criteria that CAM would not ask that we need, be imposed a higher criteria of the zone of meeting the V15. We're meeting the height, but it would have impacts on cost due to the way that the foundation systems would have to be built if we had to meet a VE criteria versus an AE zone criteria.
Currently, you're 7.2 feet into the 25-foot.
Well, one of the things that I also think is, is helpful to point out, this is an aerial, bird's eye. I have, I have a few. So the house is, is in the middle, the existing house. We're asking to be 50 closer than the existing house. And you can see, and this was part of the argument to the ZDA, how we, we are tucked back, the measure of what we're measuring to, the coastal jurisdiction line, it's measured to the grass line. And so the man-made structures that are adjacent to us on either side are actually, that was part of the hardship, saying that this particular lot wasn't improved in the 60s and 70s when it was the Wild West and people were putting walls wherever they wanted. They didn't, they maintained a setback there. The two adjacent neighbors encroached and gained it and you can see the buildings then encroached too. We're still going to be the least setback of, I mean, the most setback of anybody in that zone. And it's kind of an arbitrary measure in that the seawall, the line, is a man-made line that we're measuring to on this and, and not a, a sort of a coastal resource necessarily. I mean, I know it's become that that line is the way that we're determining where we're measuring to, but in essence, the two adjacent neighbors have, you know, 10 feet more or 12 feet more and this neighbor has seven feet more. So I think in, in that context too, between the two neighbors, that was very telling with regard to, with regard to the variance being a hardship for this particular property.
You're, you're raising the utilities?
Everything's up. It means, it has to completely meet FEMA, so yes, the utilities are up, the meter is up, the, the tanks are higher than the FEMA requirement in the flood zone for the propane. All the utilities will be, you know, above. We are asking for a crawl space. One of the things that I did look and speak to my structural engineer about the potential of, of V-zone foundation, a flow-through pierred foundation. And one of the challenges is that the lot actually slopes from a natural grade of 15 down to 10 in the front, so it's a wedge. And so if I put the, the building with a pier foundation in the front, basically the waves will come up and run under the building, up the ramp of the stone, because it's all rock, and up into the floor of the house, because you've watched it. And so our conclusion was setting a hard wall in the front because it's our only option to stop the waves at the front of the building and deal with it on a structural basis of, of designing the building to withstand that pressure is a better way than putting it up on piers because we can't physically without blasting the rock out or, or raising the house more than 15 feet, more than three feet above the requirement to allow the waves out the backside, we, we can't, we can't do it with the shape of this particular lot. And so I would agree and we probably would have put it up on piers had the, the ground shape actually accommodated it if it was a flat lot, lot. But in this case, you can imagine, you know, a ramp and the wave coming under the house and then going where there's nowhere to go, you know, it would basically pull the floor out into the house. And so in that case, I think, you know, this is the best. And we are designing that front wall with a break wave middle and with, with a buttressing of it in such a way to take the wave action on it. And it's not considered an erosion control structure because it's the house.
One thing, looking at the map there, this is the concern is, yeah, the house is setback further, however, the shore is pushed back further and creates a funneling of the water. So all the water and waves are being funneled in closer to the house and is pushing the waves 20, 30 feet up in the air. I don't know.
That's a current condition. That's a worry right now as it stands with, with no improvements, no adjustments, that the house to the south is actually going to turn it into a giant whirling kiddie pool.
Right, we're in a kiddie pool there. Your house moves closer, you have a greater chance of, as you get closer to something, your force is getting closer to you for damage. The other thing, I mean, I did for the lot that's south of it or east of it, I put the same letter in too for some portion they put on the property coming closer to the shoreline. The whole policy now is looking at, not moving things towards the water, but moving things backwards. That's whole part of this whole coastal resilience that we're, we're looking at having you guys approve at the earlier public hearing.
Given the existing septic, what would, what would they, what would you imagine that they could do that would?
For existing septic? I mean, they pretty much set, like I said, they pretty much understand what they're set. That house would, with certain dimension, and there's no reason why the house can't be any, two feet is not much in the design of restructuring something, but continuing this movement towards the water is something that needs to be stopped. We have to start working the opposite way. And as you get closer to the water, you're increasing the hazards to the future owners of this property.
And the, the reduction in pervious doesn't offset that in your opinion?
There's no reduction in pervious surface. You're going through, you have a hard slate surface, you're going into two inches of stone, which is not much of a volume to hold water and the water isn't being pushed back out to the sound. So there really isn't much of a. of a system to filter the water back into the ground.
It's two inches on the inward side. It's probably about 14 or 15 inches on the outward side. And then there's a six-inch gravel drip strip that wraps around to meet the retainage requirements of the one-inch rainstorm. So I think it is greatly improved because it's fair alleged right now.
The notes that Russ talked about earlier, when talking about that two-foot is kind of out of place, that the two-foot is talking about is the line dimension on a map when you see it on the FEMA map. Where you draw this thing in space, you have a line drawn on, say, a larger scale map. Say you have a thin little line, but once you draw this thin little line on a larger map, it becomes a wider view or a wider sort of strip. So that's either side of the line is where this FEMA line is, is what that comment is. And that same letter, John reiterated to Todd and Russell, my concerns regarding the increasing of these houses closer to the water. And those quotes I put in there regarding the coastal management plan came out of John Goutcher's letter to Russ and Todd in a October 2nd, 2014 memo. And also the same commentary in this letter also went to the ZBA. So it's nothing new for the design staff here.
The line's getting thicker on that because it's junky federal drafting of a junky federal database. I mean, it's not, there's no substance.
Right. That's why, that's why that comment about the two feet or either side of the line is, comment from John is because of that wider, like you said, you say, as John used to say.
Kevin, you said that you had the same letter, same suggestions to the house next to it?
The same letters to the house next to it. They put a seasoned porch on that one.
And what, did that come before this committee?
It came before this commission also.
And what did we, do you recall? I'm sure.
The commission, granted, it goes constructed.
Okay.
But in my view, in protecting the shoreline, public health, safety, I'm looking, my look is to not push anything closer, especially into the setback that this commission established for coastal resources. So I'm defending the coastal resource setback.
But you also agree there's a drastic improvement on the current, I mean, in terms of the improvement off of the ledge, in terms of the other structural adjustments?
I mean, it's going up, so that is, that is meeting code of moving forward towards the water or something. I don't see as a correct direction.
What type of septic do you use currently?
It's a tight tank and that's all. There's no soils on the property to allow. So we're held that the property is going to really have a low occupancy because it's really not feasible economically to be a four-season, full-time home for four people. It's going to continue to be a seasonal home because it has to get pumped twice a season or, you know, you're not going to pump it every month if you're living there at high occupancy. So I think in perpetuity, the house is in a condition of being a seasonal use. And I completely, on a big academic level, when we're looking at the town planning, I completely agree that the general consensus should be to retreat. I think though, that there has to be particular accommodations made to specific projects. And I think to some extent, you know, this falls in your judgment, but it also fell in the review of whether we had a hardship associated with this particular condition. And that was deemed that we do have a hardship and we were granted that with the zoning. So with zoning board of appeals. And so I completely agree with Kevin that a line in the sand, you know, is, you know, should be drawn. But of course, the whole point of zoning, the whole point of the appeals process, the whole point of coming before you is to look at the particular conditions of a particular lot and then render a reasonable decision. And so that's why we're asking that we feel that, sure, we can squeeze this back with the, you know, another two feet and retreat it and widen the house out. But in some respects, widening the house probably gives us more exposure. And it also probably would, we'd ask to take back that 200 feet because the usability of the space, the way that the rooms are laid out would become very narrow and rectangular as opposed to square. And you've all worked in a room that you can't furnish because it's not laid out in a proper way. We've designed this around the needs so there's no excess space so that it can be as tight as possible. So the devil's in the details. And I think that this particular case, we've done quite a bit to offset the risk. And it's not something that I feel that someone could leverage as a precedent to say that it's got so many unique conditions that it isn't something that everybody is going to say, well, you gave two feet to this other person. I can take you the feet.
So if we didn't give you the two feet and you were to, you'd take back the 200 square feet, right, that you were talking about?
I would like to have it back if I can put that on the table. But I think that, you know, it still wouldn't necessarily be designed as well as it is now. And I personally think it would potentially be a wider exposure to the sound.
And what you have in front of you is the lessening of a non-conforming one. We're giving you 200 square feet plus we're adding all this additional area for leaching. If we have to push that back, I think Russ is saying the building gets long, you know, wider per se, then we start to, you know, take away some of that stuff that we're trying to give back to you.
Also, the line we're measuring the 25 feet from, like you said, is arbitrary.
No, the line you're measuring 20 feet is a hard, fast, survey line.
No, it is. No, it's a survey.
The FEMA line is a question thing. The FEMA is different than the coastal resource line. The coastal resource line is a hard, fast, rocky shore front.
But the coastal resource line is somebody building a wall.
No, in front of his property, he has a clear-cut rocky shore front.
He does.
And that's the hard, fast line that the setback set off.
Well, there's a, there's a small seawall. There's an 18-inch seawall.
Built on the edge of the, on top of or at the edge of a rocky shore front.
Right. But that wall wasn't there. The encroachment of the ledge would be further in. If the wall was moved out, it would be further out.
And that's how this neighbor got their, you know, the car you dealt with.
Right. But the reason I brought it, Kevin is right. The context of John Goutcher's comment about the accuracy of the FEMA line, I was referencing more about the accuracy of the FEMA line in relation to the house. And that, you know, two feet plus or minus in the context of where the line falls in relation to the house is kind of the same as two feet plus or minus in this measurement. But he is right. The context of it was in relation to, its relationship to the FEMA line, not the coastal jurisdiction line.
My comment, I was talking with John Goutcher yesterday, I guess, comment his letter, like yesterday. So this letter comes today after I get his comments to you guys. But talking with John is there's some issues with the way FEMA regulations are made or even with the zoning regulations are made in terms of V and the A zones, that there, you end abruptly with the V and you go into A and there's no sort of transitional line to allow waves to dive back because you still have a certain slight height wave even after you leave the wave zone. And there's not a, in regulations right now, a transition zone which handles some of these questions that we're coming up with right now.
The designation has only a tangential relationship to how nature actually works.
Yes. There is, though, adopted two years ago, a limo, which is limited wave action zone, which is addressing that transition and is in the areas that have three-foot wave action that carries into the A zone. So there is a designated zone, whether they've mapped accurately everywhere. But there is something that is addressing that. And we didn't get many, but Madison has huge slots of limos. But the other thing I should say is neither sandy or arine, the existing house, which is at 12 feet above sea level, saw no wave action, no wave, you know, it was reoccupiable the day after the storm. So we really are looking out with the design of this, raising the three additional feet. We're looking way out and we are addressing what the occupancy plan is trying to bring up as concerns into the future. So I, I was going to be sure.
Yeah, inclusive. We tried to keep down all the technical drawing and how we went in and designed everything. As you can see from both the architectural standpoint and the engineering standpoint, we've put a lot of time into it for a small project. And we believe, both Russ and I, that this is designed in accordance and above all the regulations and rules that are out there currently. And just to remind you, we do have ZBA approval. We do have health department approval. And as you can see from Mr. Goutcher, we do have a favorable response from him.
Good. What's that?
Thank you.
So any other questions, guys? Questions from our guests, the audience, comments? Come on. No one has anything?
No one cares about this one.
Come on. Brian, Brian, you always, come on, I can count on you. No?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right.
To close the public hearing on item two.
Second? 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 All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number three. Guilford Housing Authority, 41 Boston Terrace, map 41 lot 91, Zone R3 special permit and site plan application of dumpsters 27313, request to wave fate. Motion to open this.
Second.
You're enjoying this. I know, you're really, we do this all the time.
I'm past my bedtime.
What do you got?
Well, my name is Angela Ross and I'm the executive director of the housing authority. Last time I was here, you guys gave me the challenge of...
Gave you our challenge.
Yes. Yeah. You and I, I think I've made your challenge. I did, it was very challenging. I actually had to really use on my own, go through the property myself, given the, first of all, the monetary restrictions and the moral and the legal, you know, obligations that I have to the tenants' liability. There's, you know, a lot more issues surrounding this than just, I want my dumpster here or, you know what I'm saying? So it was challenging to me. I did go through the whole property, hit a roadblock everywhere I tried to put the dumpster. I was told, you know, by dentists that there was, there were no health violations. There were no legal setbacks. So I could have stopped there, but I didn't because I want to look at the big picture. I want this to be a permanent solution. I don't want to come back here ever.
So far, we've changed.
Nothing against you guys. But I do have a location. I'm looking to do this a little differently. It's going to cost us some money, but I want to do it as an enclosure. Instead, I found a spot where we were going to put clothes on. So there's an asphalt pad there. And so I like to put the fence and clothes around it. And I think it's going to be a perfect spot because it's going to be closer for the residents, easier access for the residents, large enough to get a wheelchair in, flip the tote, put your garbage in, come out. We gained two parking spaces. So there's some hiddenness.
Any downsides that you can add here?
I can show you. And when I talk to the garbage company, they're willing to pick it up, you know, without extra charge too. So this is where we had the two-yard dumpster right here.
Yep.
And I'm proposing right here to put the enclosure. So I'm way, way, way. And this is actually the area that, you know, we're looking to mainly serve. So actually...
Closer.
Oh, yeah. By far, a better, a better decision. This is all sidewalk here. They come in, they can, you know, we can put a three-and-a-half side enclosure around it, come in, flip the totes, put your stuff in, the wheelchair out. It's just, you know, part of the period of solution.
Good.
I didn't find my contractor with that company, so now you're getting it.
It's a shame Frank's not here because this was, this is his baby.
I don't think anybody else wants to see.
We have it.
Okay. The only, yeah, the only issue is, is that this probably won't get done until the spring unless, you know, the fencing company can come earlier. We have some miles on.
The issue was odors and the cold, filthy odors in the property. Really, it's a shame Frank's not here.
We can actually, we can actually, we can go straight to public questions, for and against?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
I did report to my board and my, one of my board members did speak to the neighbors and did show the neighbors the spot.
Good.
And awareness.
Good. Thank you so much. That's great. I'm glad you're able to work this out so well. I mean, it looks like a win-win. Any other questions? Does the public have any question or comment?
I just want to make a comment. This is Ariane Tibitie, the neighbor in question at 317 Boston Street. And I wrote a letter to Angela and Peter immediately when I heard about the suggestion. It's an amazing solution. And I'm just, this whole letter, I'll submit it here. But I want to say that we're very grateful to the Guilford Housing Authority and Angela and the board member, Peter, and the board that helped to get to this event. And I had the same, so I'm just submitting this letter that I wrote then with the same picture and the spot that they had. And I also wanted to just, in behalf of coming here tonight, and I understand how Angela feels too, that I want to thank the board. So I'm going to read this letter.
Uh-oh.
Dear sir and board members, Richard Meyer, Matt and I want to thank all the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for your help in resolving the issue with our neighbor, the Guilford Housing Authority. Upon your recommendation on December 3 meeting, we sent a letter to Angela and by, on, in January 7, we're being, January 7, and on January 2, we were very happy to hear from Peter Colombo and the Guilford board member, who's a Guilford board member. He called us and showed us their new plans for handling the trash, which we believe solves the problem. And attached us the copy. And our letter thanks Peter and Angela for their efforts in coming up with an amazing solution. I'm just amazed. I would never have even thought of it. So I'm just grateful. Peter said it will allow the wheelchair bound to avoid navigating the curves and be easier for the residents and the new handicap units to get to this enclosed location. And this is my last paragraph. So the purpose of this letter is to say how grateful we are that all the P&amp;Z board members take the time to hear all sides of an issue for Guilford homeowner residents. Watch the diligent attention the board members give at these monthly meetings. This reassured us that we would be heard and whatever the decision would include, at least ours too. That is a lot of volunteer time in behalf of the community. So we thank you very much. Tonight really proved and underscored that I had no idea that you'd have some nights like this. Because our little case is little. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, and also, of course, the staff at the planning and zoning, Carl.
Who works so hard.
Yes, they do.
Well, thank you. And we are here. We are here for everybody here. That's what we do. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Glad it worked out.
Thank you. The Guilford Housing Authority.
That's what we do.
Thank you.
That's what we do. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. So we need a motion to close the public hearing, huh?
Move to close.
Second.
Favor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'm so glad you get to go home at 11 o'clock.
Yes.
You're going to run out early. We're going to be here. So you don't have to leave. We're, we're staying.
So this is a permanent solution. So we appreciate that.
Good. Glad it worked out. Thank you so much.
Very glad.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Number four, amendment. 7321, District 2, provision line, vault storage and silver paint on certain properties, land, second hearing. Can I get a motion to open this? So, any seconds?
Second.
You're going to sit out. Okay. Good. Thanks. Okay. A little poppy right now, I'm sorry. So do we have, do we have any presentation? Do anyone want to talk?
If you recall, the last meeting, there was a question. Do you want Chuck to be here to address?
Oh, right. Now, Ray Bauer has said that we want to have a firm written agreement in place that the West End property owners group would drop their case if we did this. But Chuck has waited, saying if we do this, they don't have a case because there's no propane storage there. So Chuck, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. If you adopt this amendment and there's no application filed before the effective date, then it reverts back. Then the appeal of the adoption of the amendment would be moot.
Mm-hmm.
Because, because it wouldn't be there anymore and there's no application pending under the old regulation.
All right. Good. Thank you. So we're clear to move forward with this?
Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting. Thank you.
This is the second public hearing.
All right. So we can actually take action on this?
We can.
All right. So any questions for, guys? Any questions? No? Any questions from our guests? No? Okay. Hearing none.
For and against, going against, where this is a public hearing?
Forget it. Okay. Can I get a motion to? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five. Consider, um...
We already moved that.
Delete and replace, thank you. Delete and replace 273-47, site maintenance outside display merchandise first hearing. I know that we can expect some wonderful presentations. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing on this?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have to get Josh back, too.
Josh!
Josh! Come on, Josh. Moving on to the big stuff now. Okay, come on back, bud. Just so our audience knows, Josh always recuses himself during anything to do with propane, he's returning back to regular seat now.
He doesn't necessarily always do that, he's just like this. Like divorced.
Okay.
Point of information.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do we have anyone to present on 273-47, outside display merchandise? Come on up. Stephen Cops. Give us the golden words.
Would you like me to read the...
However you want to.
All right, well, let me first explain that I submitted this on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, and the purpose of this amendment, if it's approved, is to make it possible for businesses in town on a specified basis, meaning that there are a lot of, you know, you'll see when I read, you know, read the text, that there are restrictions on this, there are conditions, but to make it possible for certain, certain times during the year, for the merchants to be able to have outside displays of merchandise, not sales, that would be limited to sidewalk sale days, day or days, whatever. So, that's the intent, and there were a lot, there were a number of businesses that approached Chamber, approached Bryan, EDC, to ask for something of this sort, they came to us asking for some help. So, I'm just going to read the text of the proposed amendment, and we'll put on my glasses and do that. This is for 273-47, site maintenance, outside display of merchandise. The purpose of this regulation is to permit the use of outside displays to stimulate local business. No commercial truck, trailer, van, or van body, or temporary shelter, storage container, or building shall be located on any lot for the purpose of an office, or storage, or the processing of construction materials in connection with a construction project on the lot, or the storage, sale and/or display of supplies, merchandise, equipment, or refuse, except in an area of a type or a purpose and for a limited time, period of time, as approved by the commission, outside, as approved by the commission, outside displays of merchandise on sidewalks or other areas of the site immediately adjoining a retail outlet will be permitted, provided the following conditions are met. A, the display does not obstruct safe pedestrian access to the, on the sidewalk location, the greater of half the sidewalk width, or 36 inches, shall be kept clear, and 36 inches is for purposes of wheelchairs, et cetera. B, the size shall be limited to one display item. C, the display must immediately abut the building structure. D, merchandise must be purchased inside the retail establishment only. E, all such displays will be removed to interior storage at the close of store operating hours on each day. F, no lighting shall be used that will be directly visible from streets, vehicular access lanes, or any motor vehicle traffic circulation areas. G, no equipment in motion shall be displayed, nor shall engine or motor operated equipment be made operative while on display. H, only products customarily sold at the retail establishment may be displayed. I, the outside display shall be limited to the first full weekend, and that's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of every month, beginning in April through October, and additionally includes holiday weekends during this period. In addition, all weekends, all weekdays from the day after Thanksgiving through December 24th are allowed. J, town approved sidewalk sale days are exempt from this regulation. So, that's...
So, when you say one sale item?
One display item.
What does that mean?
For example, and a merchant does, does just now with a mannequin, just mannequin.
Yep.
So, you couldn't put five of them out, you could only put one of them out.
So, like if this were a clothing store, and they wanted to put a rack of clothing out, would that be one item?
We don't exclude that here, but in our discussions, we did say we didn't want to see any racks.
But it doesn't say that in your proposed...
No, it doesn't.
So, theoretically, if they said, "Well, it's one rack," it would be allowed under that, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what other types of stores besides a clothing store would this be? Like the bookstore, they wouldn't, obviously, they wouldn't put one book outside, they would put...
If they had one table out there...
So, one table?
Yeah.
Okay. And what other stores, I'm trying to, going in my head, like, just going down that side of the green.
Well, it isn't just the green.
Where is it, is it...
I mean, we think of the green.
Right.
But I mean, you might, but it could be a store along Route 1 that wanted, that wanted to do it.
Right. So, what other types of stores would have outside display?
Coffee shop, could, right? A coffee shop, they could put out like a big looking coffee cup.
Just one. Hear that big cup?
Somebody could sit on a hardboard.
Well, well...
Glaze and things.
Yeah, but only one, though, right? A grill, or?
Well, I don't know.
Put a grill out on this.
That doesn't work either. Does propane tank would be put to go? I know, I'm just, we totally allow, I mean...
Well, I'm thinking, what else?
Technically done out, I mean, we allow pages to put out...
Well, they're before...
Right. Pages, pages in the food center are already grandfathered in.
Right, right.
So, this was not...
So, who else would this, I'm trying to envision what this could be, and I'm really trying to see who, like, in my mind, what other stores, like, on U S Route 1? Help me here.
Well, suppose Pasta Ves wanted to put something out.
Like a sandwich bar?
Well, not, you wouldn't, no, that would be counted as a sign, you wouldn't, you wouldn't count that, but if they wanted to put a display of, let's say, a party tray or something like that.
They'll bread.
So...
A sign made up of that says, "Oh, but it's one item."
Or, let's just say, um, a green up chef or something.
Are any stores on Route 1 doing this kind of thing now, at any point during the year?
Well, Pasta Ves has that chef outside.
He's on porch.
Is that allowed?
He has approved.
We have...
He has approved.
Steve, I know you guys talked about this while we were in Oregon, what was it that the EDC said, you know, why we want to have this amendment?
Because there were merchants that wanted to display, and I would think most of them would probably be clothing, but not all of them. Brian, can you help?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that was one of the ladies, frame outside to end clothing, Carol's Creation, ladies clothing on a frame, or some kind of display, the, I just went, the arts store behind, help me out with the right name, Reg.
Crumb Gallery?
You talking about Chroma?
Yeah, Chroma, Chroma Galleries. I mean, they had some displays and sculptures and things like that, that they wanted to have outside, just to kind of show they're open for business, and typical things they have for sale. From a practical sense, most of the people that approached us were retailers looking for women's clothing, or clothing, not just women's, but that's what we have most of.
Sure, a lot of the green might want to do it if they could.
Sure.
But they weren't all on the green?
No, no.
There were a bunch of people along, a bunch of businesses along Route 1 that thought they would be benefited by...
Yeah, but I can't picture like how.
Look, they were just, they were just sort of talking about it, right? Don't they suspect, I think last, Ray, Ray was talking about it, actually, at one point, where he said that his wife's clothing shop, she puts out a mannequin, and it signifies that they're open, and it really attracts more business, and I think that that's what the, that's what the companies around Guilford kind of want to be able to do, is to try to let them know that, "Oh, we're open, we're here, come in," rather than just having some dark windows, an open door.
I mean, Dick, who, then you want, he only in balloons outside or something like that?
Does this affect the political signs at all? No. Derek, they have second, so, it's not really...
Doesn't affect signs at all, never, not even political signs.
This is, yeah, this is just stuff. For example, you have merchandise...
And this is, one weekend a month, this is that...
What does that mean?
I'm sorry, I'm getting sleepy.
What do you mean by grand?
Not everyone's going to want to do it, but it's one weekend of month, plus holiday weekends, and then between Christmas and New, I mean, Thanksgiving and Christmas.
And the thrust of it is immense, in front of a few stores, is really what this spoils now. But we're giving, we're saying, everyone, like, there's a pizza place, they could put a piece of pizza outside.
They could put a whole big pizza.
But currently, they already are allowed to do that a certain number of days a year.
It's, you talking about the sidewalk sale day?
Correct. All encompassing, right now, they can do that a certain amount when it comes to sidewalk sets, right?
Right, but this, right, and they could just tap on the sidewalk sale days, correct, Reggie?
And what's the number of days they can currently...
Eight days a year.
Eight days a year.
No more than three days in a row.
Right, so this would increase that by fourfold.
How do you describe that again, Steve?
This would be seven times as much as that.
Steve, isn't the proposal to try this for, to see how it goes?
Yes, I'm sorry, I neglected to say that, that we were, in the cover letter, I said, "Try it for a year, see how, see how it works," before making it permanent.
Don't have two meetings on a level.
Yes.
Yeah, we could, we could have our real discussion on the second meeting due to the late hour.
Yeah, that's right. It's already quarter to one.
Steve decided...
Okay, all right, so that's good, anything else want to offer, Steve?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, don't, any of the...
I just want to make one comment. Reggie Reed, zoning officer, this amendment that Steve is proposing is enforceable, because it's the first weekend of every month, and then holiday weekends. It's not like I have to figure out which store has had stuff out for eight days during the year. This is, it applies globally throughout the whole town.
So, something like...
And it's very enforceable.
Can I ask you a question? To you, or any other person who would enforce this, do you work on the weekends?
No. I shop. I'll be looking at some displays.
That's where they want the signs out.
It can be enforced, but it won't be. All right, any other comments? All right, can I get a motion to close this?
No, continue.
Move to continue, I'm sorry.
What, what did you...
Let's do it, it's February 4.
No, let's do this one.
21st one.
No.
How about the 21st?
I'll make it to the 21st.
Okay, that's good. February 21st.
January 21st.
Is that January 21st?
Yes.
So, it's Josh, and who else? Who seconded it?
Did you move to continue to January 21st?
January 21st, yeah.
I seconded.
Thank you, Walter.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, okay. Okay, can I...
Move to approve the revised agenda, Mr. Chairman?
You don't want to go through with the drone, okay, fine. Do we have a second on approving? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's get down to meat and potatoes here. We have in front of us the Guilford Agricultural, oh, we tabled that.
That was tabled, correct.
So, we have Brown, Eva Brown. David and Janine.
That's the rock plant.
This is the two foot into the, where they're giving up certain other beautiful things, enhancing the property environmentally, and they're just moving two feet in. I see this as, you know, there's a couple issues at play.
Motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then discuss it.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to open this Brown thing?
Trying to find it in this pile, so you read it.
I know, piles are getting thick.
Tom wants to make a motion, I can clear my cell.
There you go.
Well, there's both a motion to approve, I'll do the...
Do the...
Do the one, and see what happens. Voted the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approval of Rock Coastal Area Management Site Plan for David and Janine Braun, 5-7 Rock Plant Map 10, Lot 70, as shown on CAM Site Plan Prepared for David and Janine Braun by Harken Engineering dated 11/7/14, revised to 12/10/14, and Braun Residence, six sheets, plans prepared by CK Architects dated October 28, 2014, revised to December 2, 2014. This application is approved with the following conditions. In order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents, the buildings be constructed no closer to the coastal resources than the existing structures are. If the commission allows the construction, as shown, the buildings shall be constructed to the VE standards. The Town of Guilford Enforcement Officer should be notified to inspect the sediment and erosion control...
Tom, do you want to have all these conditions in our first...
Let me clarify that, those are sort of either or. Okay, well, I, I personally don't like...
Number one.
One, or, I don't like number two.
So, we skip to number three.
The Town of Guilford Zoning Enforcement Officer should be notified to inspect the sediment and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpile should be contained by soap, fencing, and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sediment control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable materials installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. All equipment and materials should be stored outside of the hazard, flood hazard zone. Waste materials generated by the performance of the work shall be cleaned up daily and disposed of at an upland site approved for disposal of such materials. This application is approved based upon a finding that is, with the conditions of approval and variance granting, it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Just to be clear, you included conditions numbers three and four on the draft of sheet, and neither one nor two.
Not one and two, that's what I...
Do you want a second, then?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a second, so let's discuss.
Well, Steve and I read, Steve and I have read this. I understand what Kevin is saying, but I also understand that the design effort that's gone into this, and I think based on, from my thought process, based on the fact that this building is already set back from the other two buildings on either side of it, that I just, I don't see the harm in having, going with the plan as presented.
Good. So, what other comments do we have?
I'll just echo what Tom said, they're still going to be behind the two existing buildings on either side.
Right.
Even at two feet forward.
And I guess, you know, you know, we're here to sort of interpret the subtleties, and in this case, yes, it's moving two feet out, and that's exactly the opposite of what we want to do. However, they're paying a pretty hefty price to do that, in terms of increasing water retention, and I think that if there's going to be a reason why we would not follow what is going to become our plan of coastal resilience, this probably would be it, because they're acknowledging that they need to do something to make this house sustainable in the future, and they're doing that. So, I would have a hard time saying no to this.
The only reason why I would say no to this is because of all the public sort of outcry we've heard over the coastal resilience plan, people spending a lot of money on their homes down by the water, and then say that the town is devaluing their property, and we're not doing anything about it as a planning committee, by, you know, that's just what I've been hearing, and we have a coastal resilience plan that we're trying to sort of enforce.
But taken in the vacuum of not looking at what they're giving up, you could make that point, you could say, "Well, you know, they're moving two feet closer to the water, it's term," but we're not operating in a vacuum.
Well, that's not just what I'm saying, I'm not saying just the fact that they're moving two feet closer to the water, I'm saying, anyone can do whatever they really want with their money, but the town as a whole, who has come before us recently complaining about how we, as a committee, are doing absolutely nothing by allowing all these people to spend all the money down by the water, and then how they...
Is the whole town doing that?
No.
A couple, a lot of people have done that.
you know, dig our heels in, but there has to be a line with this sort of stuff and you have to make those decisions, whether it's right or wrong.
Right. Well, and good, so you know, you certainly should express your own opinion and vote the way that you feel is right. I don't know, I see this as a, they're sort of embracing the possibility of title rise and they're sort of taking it into account. I think that they are sort of, and to Kevin's, to say Kevin's right, Kevin is right, they're right, and so we've got to kind of walk the fine line of who's righter because they are kind of contradicting each other.
Well, when we're eliminating nonconformities, sometimes the argument that we're eliminating nonconformities is really just designed to be able to do more things or to get an alternating light-up billboard next to the diner. But sometimes.
Still bothering you?
Does, Mr. Chairman? But the reality here is that these nonconformities really pertain to the safety and the appropriateness of the site and if we're expecting people to drastically improve these, you know, tiny difficult houses and to go through the, what did you say, Baroque adjustments to the site in order to actually make them work in the modern world, we have to make judgment calls like these two feet, even though, you know, Kevin is right, we really need to try to convince people to get away from the water as far as that is. So I'm going to vote yes on this, as is, as it stands.
Yeah, I.
I hope you guys will too.
I just want to make sure that Kevin understands that my position would be that if this comes, every time this comes up like this, he should make this case.
Yep. Because the particulars will be different in the maximum.
Right, and it's not a reflection, it's not that I don't think Kevin is right, I do think he's right, but it is our job as a commission to weigh the totality of the application and in this case, I think we're coming out in a better way for that community.
Well, you're right, and for me, the thing that actually sort of clinches it is this picture, which shows that the neighbor's houses are, you know, 10 or 15 feet closer to the water than where this one would be.
Right, 15?
Yeah, this guy's actually in the water, so. And he's going to be really in the water.
We can only hope that the next hurricane, that house isn't there anymore.
The house to the south, for the record, the house to the south has a very unique configuration.
Richard, what do you say? It's beautiful.
I'm inclined to vote yes on this, because of the reasons just said, it's the only one.
George, any?
I don't have a problem.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, and we have the motion that says no to one and two, just three and four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Well, I'm going to oppose it.
We have one opposed and no abstentions.
Thank you guys for your time.
You don't have to leave, we're going to be open for another hour, so feel free to stay.
Please stay. Mike, you want to go get snacks? Making food running.
Okay, Guilford Housing Authority, this is a waive the fee, right? That's all this is?
Didn't you already do that?
No, we didn't waive the fee.
Oh, okay.
Let's wait.
You did not waive the fee. Yeah, move to approve the special permit and site plan location of the dumpsters. Do we have a specific motion for that?
We do, but it doesn't say anything other than what you just said, so.
Wait, did you make a motion?
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit and site revision to that Guilford Housing Authority of 41 Boston Terrace, map 41 Lot 91, to allow the locations of dumpsters as shown on.
The plan submitted tonight.
What?
The plan submitted tonight is good enough.
Plans submitted tonight. This application is approved based upon a finding that it's in conformance with the zoning code, the special permit is effective on January 16, 2015, and upon filing with the town clerk, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
We have no further opposition.
I think we have seen enough opposition and pro and con.
Now, this wasn't related to the garbage company, didn't you, you said something about the particular garbage company?
I mentioned something about the service provided by the hall.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries.
Nothing else beyond the scope.
Yes, I'll make a motion to waive the fee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Thank you, sir.
Give it to her. Get those fees.
That makes a lot of sense.
It does. I actually, I respect your position, I don't want to pay our bills, so. Okay, 273-21 is the propane? Okay, can I get a, we have a motion somewhere, I am.
Yes, you do.
It's in the paper.
We've lost control.
Okay, can someone make this motion?
I can't find it.
I want to do this.
Voted.
Yeah, I got it.
That the, I want to make sure it's the right revision before I continue. Correct. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve an amendment to zoning code as follows: delete from C permitted uses the following sentence: "In addition, the bulk storage and retail sale of propane on parcels of land containing less than four acres in area and located west of West Lake Avenue and south of U.S. Route 1 in the CD Zone is permitted by special permit," end quote. This amendment is approved based upon a finding that it's in conformance with the plan of conservation and development. Amendment is effective on January 7.
17, that should be.
Okay, phew, the 7 is new. Okay, the amendment is effective on January 17, 2015.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Do we have a second for the motion? Am I allowed to make a second? As the chair?
Of course.
I think I can. I'll second that. Any other discussion?
It's going to be a tough one.
Well, I'm trying to.
This is the.
One parcel of property. The motion, because I'm not sure that I understand.
This is the one parcel of property where we allow the storage of propane by special permit on U.S. Route 1 right by Moose Hill. And what we're doing is we're taking those words away now so that there can't be propane storage there.
If we vote yes.
If we vote yes, we're going to take away that wording. So we're going to undo what we did on October of 2013 when we said that, yes, you can do it by special permit. In that time, the applicant seems to have best interest in the property. The property has changed hands or has gone back to the bank. There is no applicants in front of us to put anything there. Okay. Got it?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion?
This has been 14 months.
We're going to call the vote. All those in favor of approving this, which is taking those words away?
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor? Two in favor? And all those opposed? Motion opposed.
Motion failed.
Motion fails. So there is still the right to store propane there on that property. Okay, this is democracy at work. Okay.
No fees involved?
Okay, so that means that the lawsuit will stand against the town. Okay, all right, so, all right, coastal resilience is going to be put off. Site plan, NERP, holding and acquisitions company Tractor Supply Company 2945 Boston Post Road map 83 lot 5A parcel B, Zone TS2 site plan application, 18097 square feet and 15,008 square feet outside display area. We have presenters.
For the record, I'm Matthew Darrell, President of the NERP.
Thank you for staying a little so late, we appreciate you putting up with us. Good night, thank you.
principal with Furma Health appears in Cassidy located in Rocky Hill, Connecticut. I'm here tonight representing NERP Holdings and Acquisitions, who are the prospective purchasers and developers of a piece of property known as 2945 Boston Post Road here in Guilford. This first photo I have up represents the existing site as it stands today. If anyone is not familiar with the site, this is a piece of TS2 zone land located on the northly side of Boston Post Road, Boston Post Road being on the bottom of this page. The site that we're looking at developing, this is about 4.16 acres, again, TS2 zone land, it is outlined in red, it's a lot that you recently subdivided out of the Sullivan Farm North property, this is about a 78 parcel. Presently on the site, it contains two buildings down towards the southeastily corner, bottom portion of the site, there's an existing 4,000 square foot concrete block building, it used to be utilized as an ample cooler storage area. And then just to the east of that, there's the remains of a two-story house, you can barely see it, it's all grown into the trees in that area. The rest of the site, the back portion, or let's say the norally portion in the easterly side, looks like it may have been a post agricultural use, is presently covered with a scrub, shrub growth. The easterly most side consists of some deciduous trees along the easterly boundary. There is a small peninsula wetlands that extends into the site, which is connected to a much larger wetlands area that continues off onto the east of this property, along that wetlands and then in the upland review area, there's also a wooded forest that protects that wetlands area. Presently also, I should mention, in front of the existing building, there's the remains of the Timonis parking area and access to that parking area is through a curb cut along the center of the site. The site itself is located about 1,200 feet to the east of Notch Hill Road and we have about 333 feet in front and a little Boston Post Road. Topography on the site, I would say the grade is moderate, sloping from an elevation of about 192 along the westerly boundary, sloping at a grade of about 3% to 7% in the easterly direction to an elevation of 172 along the easterly boundary. Over here for tonight is we're seeking site plan approval to develop this site for a new retail store to be occupied by the Tractor Supply Company. If you're not familiar with the Tractor Supply Company, Tractor Supply is a retailer that caters to the gentleman farmers. You can typically go into the Tractor Supply building and buy anything from implements for tractors, corrals for cattle and horse, we'll say work clothes, you can buy feed for animals, cattle, supplies, hardware, lawn tools, and rakes, mowers, and that sort. On this plan, you'll see a round rectangle that represents the footprint of the proposed building, it's a footprint of 19,097 square feet. The overall footprint is about 124 feet, four inches wide by 100 feet deep with the front vestibule that bumps up to the front of the building. Off to the side, you'll see this gray area, that's an area that we call the outside display area, that's typically a concrete pad, the pad itself has an area of 15,008 square feet and is circumference by a chain link fence, in this particular case, it's going to be a black vinyl chain link fence, there is a gate located on the front of it and there's a gate located to the back of it. This is an area where there's additional products stored, products that are too large to keep in the store, such as, again, essential sections of fence, which typically have a length of about 20 feet, corrals for horses and cattle and implements for tractors, things that are just too big to have in the store and maneuver in and out. The gates on either side of it allow customers that are coming to our facility to go into the store and make a purchase, after they make the purchase, they can come through the parking lot with their vehicle, with a trailer, and actually pull into the gate, into the side yard or display area, be loaded up with forklifts onto the truck or into the trailer and then continue out through a gate on the back, so all the loading occurs in this area. Within that area, our actual sales area consists of only about 12,711 square feet, about 2,300 is this access aisle that runs through it, there's no displays on that, needs to be remain open so those vehicles can actually get through the site. Per year zoning regulations, we need to provide, we come up with a total of 77 parking spaces, quite honestly, for a typical Tractor Supply, that's more than ample. We find that typically a Tractor Supply is a low retail use, it's a low traffic generator. We find that somewhere in the magnitude of 60 to 70 spaces is more than ample for this type of facility. So for a parking lot configuration, what we're looking at doing is constructing our main parking area out to the front of the site. In this area, we're looking at having about 47 parking spaces and an additional 10 parking spaces off to the side of the side yard display for a total of 47 spaces and then four spaces out back for employee use. That keeps it, that makes it short of the 77 spaces or 16 spaces short, what we're looking at doing is perform as 16 deferred spaces along the back section of the parking lot. Those places would be graded to the proper grade. If we find we have a situation where we do not have ample parking, we'd easily be able to go in and to fine grade, put processed stone base down and pave it to accommodate the additional parking, but because we don't need them, it's an additional pavement, additional runoff, we don't want to put them in at this point, we defer it, but again, if the town finds a necessary area, thinks we have an issue and they want us to put them in or we have to.
Can I ask you what question, while you're doing this? Because I'll forget. How will the customers who park in those 16 spaces, if you decide to need them, how will they get into the store? Is there a back entryway or, like, that's often back of your loading area?
They would have to come through the side yard or they would have to go around to the front of the store.
Okay, so that side yard would not then just be for loading, that would be a customer?
There's passenger gates on it.
I think you have some.
Other than, other than the 20-foot wide sliding gates, there's actually passenger gates on it also, so they would be able to come through that way.
So I suppose you might be able to have your employees park there.
But also, besides just passing through the passenger gates, is it correct to say that customers would want to come around to the side anyway to review items?
Yes, I mean, yeah, some people do come through the side here.
So it's not just for going back and forth with those people?
No. So for circulation on this site, one of the things we're looking into and proposing to do is you'll see this driveway is actually off our property. This is a common driveway that's not really going to service our site, could potentially service any other development in the back portion of this property. We're looking at constructing this driveway, which should have a width of about 30 feet. The way the grading of this driveway works is it starts here at the high point along Boston Post Road, slows down at a grade of about 1%, so a minimal grade of about 1%. There's no high points to let drainage go back towards Boston Post Road, all the drainage goes to the back. We have it in a roadway that has a width of 60 feet. The reason for setting the roadway width of 30 and the roadway of 60 is in the future, if there is additional development back here, this driveway can be converted to a town roadway. We're actually setting up the construction cross-section, the thickness of the pavement and the processed stone to meet the requirements of your road specifications, so in event, if they do want to do some type of other development back here, this could be converted to a town roadway. We will be bringing, flip over a page here, in addition to the construction of this driveway, there is a water main out front, we'll be extending the water main along this driveway and providing individual water services for both fire protection and domestic water to the back portion of this building. For the other circulation of the site, we have the front driveway off of this common driveway, it services the majority of the parking area out to the front. We have the driveway that continues around to these 10 parking spaces and then around to the back. You'll see this other large gray area, this is an area that we utilize for loading. This is an area that we utilize for loading of the trucks to go into the store and into the side yard display area. This is a level concrete pad and the pad is not a drop loading dock. There would be a raised, actually movable platform on it that can be pulled up to the truck or the truck backs up to. It's a ramp, so when the truck backs up to it, it can then go down the ramp to the level concrete pad and then either into the side yard display or into the back of the building. So all the deliveries would be through the back of the building. You wouldn't see anything occurring up front. In addition to in the back, there's a dumpster pad, not a dumpster pad, but there's a dumpster to the rear of the building. When you find a dumpster at Tractor Supply, it's a smaller dumpster, it's a six cubic yard dumpster. Reason for having that smaller dumpster is the majority of the waste they're putting out is either paper products or cardboard products. All those products are handled through a baler that's actually inside the building. And all those balers are stored inside until such time that recycling company comes and picks them up. They do not generate a lot of other non-recyclable waste. So we tend to have a very small dumpster, typically only getting picked up about once a week. So you don't see a lot of trash generated from this facility. Once a, if a tractor trailer is coming into the site, we've actually set it up so it can maneuver, we call it WB65, it's a wheelbase 65 tractor trailer, can pull off of Boston Post Road into the common driveway, through the front of the site, around on the side yard, back out to this roadway, and then back into this loading dock. They can make the delivery and then pull back out through this, I'll say norly most driveway, and then continue out through common driveway back out to Boston Post Road. So the circulation of that tractor trailer will be around the entire site and back out to Boston Post Road. Excuse me. For other utilities, I've already mentioned what we're doing with water. The site is serviced by an onsite septic system. We've done extensive soil testing on the site, and the best area we find for the soils for the septic are actually paid out behind this loading area. So we're going to have a septic system consisting of concrete galleys, which is actually going to be underneath the pavement. The units are actually designed to be supported for tractor trailer traffic. There are going to be heavier duty leaching unit. In addition to in reviewing plans with your fire marshal, the only other concern he had was about if he has to stage an area out back, he has to put his piece of fire apparatus in. When he puts down his support posts, he wants to make sure that they're not sitting directly on top of the galleys. So what we agreed to do with him is we extended the concrete pad. This is an area that's going to be about 27 feet wide by 50 feet long and designated as no parking fire lane. It's going to have a depth of concrete of above 10 inches with rebar on top of bottom. Therefore, he has a designated area that he can set up his piece of fire apparatus and put down a support post, and it would disperse the load across those concrete galleys. He doesn't have to worry about setting right up on top of those concrete galleys and possibly crushing them, although they are designed to take those type of loads. Additionally, free utilities, we do have gas out in the road. We'd be extending a gas service into the building. And then all our electric, our telephone and our cable TV would be brought off one of the existing utility poles out front and then directly underground into the building. For storm drainage, if you were to take a look at storm drainage today, what you find is there's a slight high point just off to the west here. We took a look at two different drainage areas. Subarea A was a area that ran right across the front of this property, or actually right across the center of this property, and then discharged to this east of the property line onto the neighbor's property. When we're out there doing our survey work and also doing some soil investigation, the neighbor did approach us and let us know that he has had a drainage issue over the air with, over the years with all the runoff that comes off of this site. So when we designed our drainage system, we tried to do something to improve his situation at the same time. And then the second drainage area, we call subarea B, once again starts just off to the west here, kind of runs through a vein and then feeds into this wetlands area that continues off to the east through the larger wetlands area, and eventually through Colbert to the, what part to the east that goes back underneath Boston Post Road. The way we handle the drainage is we take our parking lot and we've run a series of catch basins in it. So the whole front half of the parking lot, the side yard display is all picked up by these catch basins. It's all then conveyed from the catch basins through an underground pipe system, then conveyed to the back portion of the property where we're proposing to construct this stormwater management area. The stormwater management area is designed twofold. Number one, to improve stormwater quality before it's allowed to discharge water to the adjoining wetlands, and also to attenuate the flows prior to the discharge into that wetlands area. That will happen, number one, stormwater quality is going to be taken care of by, basically what happens is the bottom foot of elevation of this detention basin is below the outlet elevation from the basin. So what happens is, what happens is we take the first, what we call first flush of runoff. It's collected within the system, discharged, and it's held in the basin. We don't have high permeability soils, but at least there's some permeable impact here. So that water will be allowed to infiltrate back into the ground. It would be properly vegetated with different types of plant species and wetless plants to help break down fluke and center. The top two feet of basin is what controls the rate of runoff. So as the water builds up, on that, the upper two feet, there's an outlet structure, which is basically a concrete box with a V-notch wear in it, the face of it. So as the water builds up against it, it allows more and more water up deeper it gets. From there, it continues on to what we call a level spreader. This level spreader basically consists of a series of four foot wide by four feet high concrete galleys. The bottom two feet of these galleys on the downhill side is buried into the ground. The top two feet is exposed. So what happens again is the water goes into those gully units, there's allowed some infiltration of water back into the ground, and then the upper two feet is allowed to discharge it through a stone pad and then continue on to the adjoining wetlands. Based upon the drainage we studied, we prepared for this. We find that post-development, you will see either a very slight decrease or very similar amount of flow going to the adjoining wetlands post-development. To the east, to the adjoining property, the east, what you find is that there's a substantial decrease in flow going to the neighbor's property to help alleviate some of the drainage problems that occur on his site.
I'm sorry to ask you such a basic question, but was design review in favor of the lesser number of parking spaces in order to increase the permeable surface?
To decrease the permeable surface.
I mean, to increase the permeable, decrease the impermeable?
Yes.
Design was, was in fact in favor of all the way up to the, all the way up to the level that you were requesting?
Yes. Yeah, initially, I'll point out initially on the first of the plans that were submitted to you, let me back up a little bit. When we officially went to design review, we had a total of the 47 parking spaces up front. Okay. They initially came back to us and said, we want you to decrease the amount of coverage up front. Okay? What we had to do is, number one, this corner was squared off. Okay? We didn't have this island here. I had about five parking spaces here that I eliminated. Okay? We revised the plans. We added spaces in the back here for deferred spaces. We were up to at that point 21 deferred spaces. Okay? We made these revisions, we submitted them back to the town for finding zoning and wetlands approval. The applicant, or the future tenant that's going to be occupying the building, came back to us and said, it's not going to work for us. It's not an apartment in front of the building. What can you do? I took a look at this, and basically what I had to do is I had to slide this westmost edge of the pavement over about 10 feet. I had to decrease the width of the island by two feet on both ends here and here. Okay? And then push these spaces over a few feet also. That allowed me between here and here, I picked up five spaces without substantially increasing the previous coverage and still meeting the objective of the design review basis that they wanted me to soften up this corner. So I still met that objective, and we have the tenant happy now, and I don't have a substantial increase in payment with this revision.
That's why it looks very slightly off from what came before in that wetlands.
Yep. Yeah, so my revision, we didn't do anything in the annual review areas, anything within the wetlands, we didn't change anything to that. So that's, that's just there. We also, as part of, as part of our design review, there originally was no island on the center parking lot. They wanted an additional green area, so we had this six foot wide island across the whole front of it. Later in the landscaping plan, I'll show you, we had to add some additional landscaping also, but I'll get into that in a second. Oh, I guess I'm going to do it now. So this is a landscape plan as prepared by our landscape architect, and we initially submitted to design review. Tractor Supply typically likes to have very low plantings within the parking lot, obviously to keep the presence of the front of the building open. They like to be as visible as they possibly can. Design review came back and said, no, we want shade trees within the parking lot. They provide, you know, cooling for the parking lot. So we need to at least apply, comply with the regulations that you have. Your regulation says that I need to have at least one tree for every 10 parking spaces within the parking area. So if you look along the front of the site, again, we have 47. What we did is we got rid of all the low plantings in these islands and put a series of canopy trees in each island and then one here at the corner for five canopy trees in the parking lot. In addition to, we have three canopy trees that are along this side of the building. We still kept the shrubs along this front corner. We're trying to soften this corner. And then down at this location, we're proposing to put a series of evergreen to act as a buffer from the existing building that's just, oh, this is not a residential building, it's a residential zone. It's actually some type of novelty shop. And we put in this evergreen buffer in this area. These trees along the back corner are all remaining. The trees up against the wetlands area, all remain as they exist today. So there's not a lot clearing going on in this site. This whole detention basin is being constructed within an existing clear area, so there's no additional landscaping, other than the vegetation that's being planted in this stormwater quality basin in this back portion. We do have a proposed mining sign, that mining sign is located up here at the front southwest of the corner of the site. We are proposing to put some lower landscaping features around this, consisting of shrubs and some perennial growths. And then again, designing this and blow shrubs along this front corner, because what's going to happen when we take a look at it on the site, because it drops off about 20 feet from here to here, I need to plateau this off. So what's going to happen in this section, I'm going to have a slight cut going on. In this section, I'm going to have a slight fill. I'm going to hold the grade along the front of the building and then have a slight pitch away from the building towards the front. So what ultimately happens is that this corner is elevated above six feet from the elevation of the road. So rather than having a steeper bank, we're going to feather that back to the street line, but still we want to soften a little bit more by putting those plantings in there. For lighting, for lighting, we have a series of light holes. They're double-headed fixtures, one in each end island and one in the center of this. There is going to be another double-headed fixture off to the side. I should note that you'll see this area far off on the east side, it looks like a parking area, but it's actually an area we call a permanent trailer display area. This is an area that we store landscape trailers, like the black clap bed landscape trailers you see, a small landscape contractor use for display and sale. It's an area of about 3,000 square feet. Those trailers will be there at all times, they need to be accessible by the access drive, so if a customer comes and purchases them, they can back up to them and take them away. For other lighting, we have a triple-headed fixture just on the edge of our side yard display area. The triple-headed fixture lights up the inside of the outside display area, and then there's some wall packs on the side of the building that shine back into that outside display area. Other wall packs are going to be along the back of the building to light this back area. Originally, we had some light poles in the back of the site, where we thought it was just too much, too much lighting. We really didn't need it from the back. We have one in the back of the building to be more sufficient for lighting up these employee spaces in that loading dock area. And then once again, down along this side of the building, just to light up the side up into that roadway area. Along the front of the building, there's just going to be a series of gooseneck lights or ventile lights that are over the front gambrel. Then there's one light just at the entrance drive to kind of light that up also. We had our lighting professional prepare a wood measures plan to show that we have adequate lighting levels throughout the public portion of the parking lot and then along the back portion of the parking lot, without having light sprayed onto adjoining pieces of property that have been presented and demonstrated as part of the application. For the building itself?
Hey Jim, you might just add that if you replaced the light packs you had in that building with the goosenecks at the recommendation of DRC.
The recommendation of DRC, what typically happens on Tractor Supply is you have three goosenecks right in the center of the building, and then you have wall packs or another four wall packs along the front of the building. At DRC, they didn't like the wall packs in the front. What we propose to do with them is, let me show you the elevations here.
Which kind of problem did they have with the wall packs?
It's just, I mean, the wall pack, unfortunately, is more industrial looking than wanting something that kind of more accent at the front of the building than being a wall.
You're talking about wall packs, pointing out.
No, wall packs, basically, it looks like a box on the side of the building. I'll give you an example. This is an elevation of the Tractor Supply that was recently built in Old Sabre. This is, so this is what the front elevation would typically look like. These boxes are the wall pack units. They shine down towards the ground, and they feed out towards the parking lot. These are the gooseneck fixtures we talked about. So these would remain. They light up the front gambrel roof and then the sign that's over the front door. DRC did not like these, these lights. So what we agreed to do is either use something more ornamental like this to kind of accent the front of the building, or to put lighting underneath this awning. This awning is a galvanized metal awning, which sticks out about six feet from the face of the building. But it would allow for lighting along the sidewalk, it would allow for a little spread on the face of the building to kind of accent and not be as industrial looking. So again, that's, that's the elevation for Old Sabre. We're looking at building a very similar building here in Guilford. So this is the elevation as presently proposed for Guilford. Do you know any difference between this and Old Sabre front? This is mirrored. On the Old Sabre, the side yard display is off on the left-hand side, and Guilford here will be off on the right-hand side. So you can see this is the side yard display, these are the gates we were talking about. This is actually the pedestrian green. It's up, the gate is up the end of the building. The building itself is a one-story, the construction is actually a concrete block. What we do with the stores we build here in Connecticut is on the bottom section, we use a split base block that's painted with a taupe color for about the bottom four feet. That's all, we do that because you have things that bump up against the building, we need something a little bit more durable so it doesn't get scuffed. A typical Tractor Supply facility would be a smooth face concrete block for the remaining upper portion of it. For here in Connecticut, what we typically have been doing is we've been using a product called Hardy Plank instead. Hardy Plank, if you're not familiar with it, is a simulated clapboard siding. It's actually a concrete material, but it looks like, looks like a wood clapboard, very durable. That gets painted to a yellow color, and then once again, we have our stainless, our galvanized awnings on the front of the building. We have a gambrel roof. This sticks out over our front vestibule. The overall height of this building is 20 feet eight inches. And then down the sides of the building, we continue that band of the taupe color with the split base concrete block. But then the upper portion on the sides and on the back is a smooth face block that's painted once again the same color as the front. I will note, as part of going through the design review committee, this is the plan that we presented to them. They asked from the original plan, they want something that's more along the farming theme. This is not your typical prototype Tractor Supply. Your typical prototype would just have a gable roof over this front entrance. In addition to, we're showing these faux windows. Designer view did not like the faux windows, so as part of the final, that would be eliminated. It would, if the planning zoning commission prefers, we thought they looked good. They are similar to what's on the Old Sabre store. We have these, these faux bar windows on the other side of it. But basically, this is the building that we're actually looking at building here in Guilford.
Is that, am I correct in saying that that's the, those four, it would be, it would also be four on the Guilford store, right?
Yeah. Yeah. This is, same with, same lighting.
And why didn't designer view like those that they were looking for a farm-like building?
I don't know. I mean, they were happy when they went the gambrel roof compared to the gable. They were happy with the awnings that we put on there.
And that's the only change that you would ask us to overrule them on is those four?
Yeah. Yeah. So the only other issue I'd, you know, I'd like to bring up in my presentation tonight is signage. I know we need to go back and actually file a sign application, but as I mentioned, what we're proposing to do on this particular site... But as I mentioned, what we're proposing to do on this particular site is propose to have a monument sign out front here. In your package, there's details of the actual sign we're looking at using.
For the purpose of, you know, specificity, the planning zoning commission doesn't have to approve the sign design. That's done by the zoning enforcement officer. In this case, upon the recommendation of the Designer Review Committee, I mean, of course, if they want to see the signed design, they can, but it's not really part of their jurisdiction.
Then I'll leave it.
I don't need to preclude your doing it.
Yeah, well, we'll get a sign tonight, then it's late hour. We're open as late as you want us to be. Would you like to see it?
Go ahead.
You want to see it, Tom? Do you want to?
No. Why?
Because I want to.
This building has to be sprinkled, right?
Yes.
So on your, I didn't mean to, are you done with your, I don't want to...
No, you're done with your done. My sign was my last.
So where, where have you, on any of these plans, made accommodation for being able to hook up?
Siamese connection.
To, you know, where's the fire department, where's the fire department to be able to hook up to the sprinkler system? So, the system?
We're bringing a main down this driveway.
So you're going to have pressure already there?
Yep. There'll be a hydrant located at the back section here.
Okay.
Down along this. We have a fire line that runs off the main into the back of the building.
Okay.
We typically have a Siamese connection on the front corner of the building.
Okay.
So if the fire truck can be along this driveway or the parking lot, hook up to that hydrant and then hook up the Siamese connection and pump back into the building.
Okay. So you're also going to have to sprinkle underneath the front line?
It's coming for, possibly, yes.
Well, there's some records, some letters that you rerun it? Unless... I have a couple. Have you ever given any thought to go back, could you go back to the front of the building?
The elevation?
Yeah, the elevation, yeah.
It's a good picture.
Yeah. The reason I'm bringing this up is I own a business that's similar to this, the building is similar to this. And with the front awning on the building, in order to get, and we have the same kind of gooseneck lights, we have more than you have, but we still were required to put some up lighting or some small lights underneath the awning because that was a walkway. We wanted more lighting in that area. Are there going to be any lights at all? Do you see any lights, any lights underneath those awnings?
That was a recommendation of the Designer Review, that we either go with the other awning light or like a gooseneck light, mostly more on the accent nature, not the wall packs.
Okay, alright.
Where we ran, where I run into the issue about having a sprinkler in awning before, it actually wasn't this awning that needed sprinklers. This is a metal structure. It's a metal frame structure. It's a metal roof. It's not enclosed. It's open on the bottom side. Where we ran into the issue before, it actually happened in Old Sabre, is this gambrel roof here. In this particular case, you have a vestibule for the majority of it. So it's actually inside the building. So that sprinkler, we ran into in Old Sabre, because there's another gambrel on the side of the building which doesn't have a vestibule. So we ended up having to sprinkle that one. I've never read the situation where I actually have sprinklers. These awnings, these stick out about five, six feet from the building.
Okay, so they're not at full...
No, it's not at full, it's not a fully closed structure. It's actually just a metal frame.
Okay.
Galvanized metal frame with galvanized metal roof on it.
Okay.
So what's up with the Old Sabre building that didn't even have a gambrel on the side?
That one, that one actually is up against the road. The only way we could decide to work is we had to put the building sideways on the property.
Only you wanted to carry your trademark front.
Yes.
More questions?
There are a couple of letters that you wrote.
He's got a question.
Oh. There's no signage on the side or...
That's a good question.
Not?
No. For this site, for this site, two signs. There's a monument sign out there in the driveway. There's going to be some type of sign that we, we're not, we're not front building.
The side is similar to what you're calling, that CBS has here on the corner, even though it's not actually a...
Well, CBS signs on about the three sides of this building.
Yeah, I mean, but they have monument signs.
That would actually be a pile on sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, no monument sign. So this is the side of Old Sabre. It's 48 square foot side, which means...
I can envision that right there.
Right. So it is the height of, the overall height is 80 feet. The only difference we have, on the side, we're proposing to put it down. This sign is, in Old Sabre, if they want it in the bottom, we have a solid base on the one-way closing there.
Yeah.
Sometimes the letters, we have a question. So I'll read this letter in from...
Will we read the feedback?
Well, yeah.
I gave you a mouthful last time.
Yeah.
I'll take it here.
Yeah.
Government planning and zoning commission from Kevin McGee, Rumpel Planer, Tractor Supply Company, Boston Post Road. The applicant has completed the checklist to guide low-impact development best management practices and is utilizing some of the recommended practices. The proposed plans show development being constructed on the portion of the property that was formerly utilized for agriculture. The stormwater system has been developed utilizing a low-impact principle. The stormwater management system catch basins and roof leaders discharge into a two-chamber detention basin designed to treat the first inch of rainfall. The stormwater system is also designated, designed to attenuate off-site discharges at approximately existing levels. The plan for the projects has sedimentation erosion control procedures that are in compliance with Section 273-97B subsection 6 of the zoning regulations. Section 273-75 site plan review general standard subsection M6 landscape strip requires, each lot shall be provided with a landscape strip 15 feet or more and width along the street line. The strip shall be landscaped and maintained with lawn, shrubs, trees, and other suitable landscaping and shall be separated from any adjoining off-street parking or loading area, driveway, or outside storage area by a curb six inches in height. Necessary driveways may be provided through the strip. Two existing trees located east of the entrance road will most likely be damaged by the construction of a bypass line for development. No new tree plantings have been proposed in this grass landscape strip between Boston Post Road and the parking lot as required by the above site plan regulations. As a condition of approval, the landscape plan should be revised to show three additional trees spaced approximately 80 feet on center in the landscape strip between Boston Post Road and the parking lot. The government land dwellings commission at December 10, 2014 meeting approved their regulated activity with conditions for the development of a proposed tractor supply company with 19,000, 97 square feet retail building and associated improvements to be constructed within 100-foot review area. In addition, the commission approved a referral to the planning and zoning commission with conditions for approval which are provided under a separate letter. In order to make sure the dwellings are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, temporary sedimentation traps should be constructed prior to any soil disturbance. Two, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation erosion control measures prior to site construction. Three, to ensure future compliance with the stormwater management system in accordance with Section 273-73F of the zoning code. Upon approval of site plan application, but prior to the commencement of any work, the applicant shall execute an agreement and follow bond with the planning and zoning commission to guarantee completion and maintenance of work required by the approved stormwater management. A maintenance and operation manual for the stormwater system located at the subject site. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspections, maintenance of the stormwater system, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include but not limited weekly, monthly, and quarterly inspections. Other property for litter monitoring of dumpsters, outside storage areas, monitoring of each basin's residual accumulation of cumulated materials and non-nated invasive species in the soils and any energy dissipators. The maintenance plan needs to be provided, provide a statement that the stormwater management plan be revised annually so that inspections and maintenance requirements may be modified to any changes approved by the town engineer and aspect of the completed stormwater system and D that maintenance coverage be recorded in land records. Some of these conditions of approval of the maintenance plan are on the plans, but they just need to be condensed down into a document which will be met by the landies.
We need to change tapes again. This is a three-tape night. So we have less than a minute going, so we're just going to take a little quick break and switch over and we'll be right back. Nothing else will be transacted while we're on. That's okay. Okay, we are back. We have just changed the tape. We have not transacted any business, had any discussion. We are back to our presentation on tractor supply. Were you still going or... Yeah, I guess I just need a clarification. On Kevin's conditions, there was a, I guess it sounded like it was a requirement that we added additional three street trees along the frontage. I just need to be clear for my client, is it actually a regulation or a recommendation?
That is a regulation that's saying planting strips, these strips require...
I think you referred, it's under your site plan requirements under Section 273-75, item four, M4.
M6.
M...
M6, not M4. M4 is number, parking spots, number of trees. And then there's a separate line just below that, talking about landscape strips.
Okay, then I got a different regulation offline because mine's M4. It talks about landscape strips.
Correct.
That's what you're referring to? Okay, it's M4 and the ones I pulled offline. So what it talks about is that we have to provide a 15-foot wide landscape strip that either needs to be vegetated with lawn, shrubs, or trees. I don't think it specifically says trees.
There was no, there was no or in there. It was and. There's no or in that sentence.
What's this?
273 dash what?
I have 273 dash 75, M4.
Josh has a book. Josh has everything. Justin Motel and Cecil. 19.
19?
No, no.
75.
75.
73 dash 75.
Page 58.
Page 58.
I got Starbucks, I got Starbucks coffee right now. All right. And we're looking at M, A, B, C, D.
M what?
Six.
Either four or six.
I'm quoting. I'm misquoting, I'm misquoting, so it is M4. Or M4. Each lot shall be provided with a landscape strip, comma, 15 feet or more in width along the street line. The strip shall be landscaped and maintained with lawn, shrubs, trees, and other suitable landscaping and shall be separated from any adjoining off-street parking or loading area, driveway, or outside storage area by a curb six inches in height. Necessary driveways may be provided through and in the strip. So the discrepancy over with lawn, comma, shrubs, comma, trees, and other suitable landscaping, and shall be separated from any adjoining off-street parking or loading area, driveway, or outside storage area by a curb six inches in height. Necessary driveways may be provided through and in the strip. So the discrepancy over with lawn, comma, shrubs, comma, trees, and other suitable landscaping, right, that's where we're...
Yeah, I'm not trying to fight on this. I don't, it's just...
You just want to know what it is.
Going back to tractor supply, they're pretty adamant on not having trees in front of their buildings. We had, you know, obviously it was in the regulations, we had to put the ones in the parking lot. If it's a regulation, then I have to deal with it, I have to deal with it.
So Kevin, what do you, here, it's sort of, yeah, well, I don't know if it's necessarily, it's sort of just what, it makes, it makes, the way I read it is like, whatever, you know, whatever goes in that area, whether it be shrubs, trees, and so how is it, why...
We've never interpreted that to mean specifically they had to have trees.
Yeah.
We've interpreted it to mean that you have to have a landscape strip that has landscape materials, but there's no specification of any specific number of trees. You know, we've never really taken it quite to the point where if there's a prescribed, you know, tree planting regimen, I mean, that can be pretty exactly interpreted.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
I think that's the way I would interpret it. But it would look nice with trees.
So Kevin, why was it the trees that you're...
It's, I mean, it's a pattern we've been doing along Route 1 East. We continued it up on Route 1 West, up in front of the apartments across from Route 1. We have in front of the gatehouse. It's just a continuing landscape plan that's been going on through Guilford. And my interpretation of the regulations, there's no or. It's and. And that it's, I think they can be put in a place where they don't block the view. That's why I said 80 feet. I mean, you have trees in the two islands, you put the trees on the road, it mustn't have the same view. You still have that same view lane, tall trees, you can see through, so it's not like it's like a block.
You also can take a look at those existing trees.
I think so.
Which is underneath the power lines that's going to get chopped down.
When they're already severely hacked because they're under the power lines.
Correct, Kevin. So for every, for every landscaping strip here, it needs to have lawn, shrubs, trees, and other suitable landscaping. So it needs to have lawn, shrubs, and trees.
That's what it reads, that's your regulation, the way it reads.
Well, that's what the sentence says.
That's what the sentence says, that's what I mean.
Well, the way that I read it is sort of just one, it's sort of whatever is suitable for that area is what, you know, is permitted.
That's the universe of items that can be put onto a landscape strip. It doesn't, we're not required to put all of those items on each one.
Trees would be nice.
I mean, I'm reading, I was reading it, see how ordinary, I mean, he does have grass, he does have shrubs, and now we're going to have...
Do all of our sites have shrubs?
Grass and...
So he's also required to have shrubs. He's also required to have grass.
And he has, he's showing those.
Yeah, we're proposing the shrubs again to soften out that corner.
So if you put the trees in there, you take the shrubs out?
Well, it says and, so it's good. I'm just asking. I'm going to go back to the, and tell them that, you know, there was a recommendation or a condition that we put the trees in. But again...
So, so, if your concern is that you're now going to have trees in the parking lot and trees on the street and that there's not going to be a good view to the building.
They want it unobstructed.
Correct.
And for instance, this is a problem, we have a facility that we did in our commercial department in Connecticut. We have a former Frank's nursery we took over that was already landscaped. There are large evergreen trees in front of that site. It's unfortunately probably one of the lower performing sites. It's obstructed. Okay. Problem number one, you know, they don't want to be obstructed, they want it to be visible from the road. The other big problem I see here, and again, if you go by the site and take a look at it today, those existing trees out there are severely cut back because of those power lines. Unfortunately, we got the power lines on this side of the road. So they may be small today, but eventually they're going to be...
What about in the absence of those trees, if there's a low stone wall, like a two-foot stone wall? Because that's what West End is talking about doing, is their trademark road decoration. Would that make you happier or not?
I mean, I'm not pushing, I won't push for any of that for that expense. I mean, I'm looking at maintaining, I'm also a two-door, I'm also a roadie, tree planting and stuff in, knowing the tree, the trees underneath the wire, which are going to be probably cut down next time TLP does their major maintenance through there. And pushing the trees a little bit closer to the parking lot gets them away from the wires. Looks like the trees would be at least 20 feet from the wires. We planted that on the property line where they can actually grow up and properly trimmed away from, from the wires.
I hadn't thought about it, but where you described the trees, both on the east end and on the west end, right where they're doing the construction. It's true that we do seem to put a lot of trees in. As much as I like to cut trees down around power lines, I also think that they look beautiful. So I don't know.
I mean, I can go for...
I don't think the regs state that we have to have all of those things in these landscapes.
I will go for two at 100, 100, 100 feet or so distance.
What do you think?
Okay. I have my area motion for you, if you want to have the trees in the condition, you can do that.
But there's another letter that needs to be read into...
Oh, more letters? Yes, let's do that. And it's midnight, so...
Yes. Yes. Okay, this is the letter from Scott, Scott Williams.
Well, you don't have to read that.
Oh, I know.
Okay, so anything that Kevin didn't already say.
I think they have a couple of things regarding lighting and some material management, I think, in there.
But we've incorporated those into the.
I was a part of your conditions, Kevin.
Did you see the wetlands letter?
Site lighting should be designed with downlit, full-cut-off fixtures which reduce zero luminous at the edge of the wetlands.
Which they already are.
And then there's minutes from the design review committee, which.
The street, the last pair.
I'm gonna read the last pair. All right. It's structured in the motion that the committee recommend key, planning zoning committee approve this application with the following recommendations: that the lighting wall packs be removed, and instead the lighting be placed under the metal awnings to illuminate the walk in the building, that the faux barn doors be removed on the front, to propose a detail to turn the corner from the party plank type siding on the front elevation to the cement block on the side, to add trees to the parking lot in accordance with the regulations, and to stay within the signage allowance regulations by reducing the size of the street monument sign and increasing the size of the building monument sign, mounted sign, excuse me. Mr. Weisenborn's second motion, and it was carried unanimously.
All those conditions are met and have revised plans, with the exception of the sign issue, which is still unresolved. They may seek a variance.
And we're still talking about the faux barn doors, because they won't top.
Why don't I say we're okay to wait?
I have mine on my building. Is there kind of one option we could put it on? Oh, I got another letter.
Another letter?
Yes.
Oh, this is good.
This one's from Jim Portley, town engineer, dated today, January 7, 2015.
That was yesterday.
No, that's different. We're splitting hairs. We need to dispatch so we're not here till tomorrow. Regarding site plan of NERP holding an acquisition company, Tractor Supply, map 83, lot 2A, parcel B, development of this 41.6 acre parcel has, as shown on the project map, project plans prepared by Halcy, Pearson, and Cassidy, several engineers and land surveyors, has been well thought out and designed fits well onto the land. The engineering elements of drainage, traffic flow, and grading are satisfactorily addressed, as well as the design of sanitation and erosion control during and after construction satisfy best management practices. Access to the site off the 30-foot common driveway is reasonable for tractor-trailer movement. Access egress to Boston Post Road and approval of the new common driveway must be secured from the Connecticut Department of Transportation prior to issuance of building or site permits for the development. It is recommended that the site plan application be approved with the condition that prior issuance of building or site development permits and encroachment permit be secured from the Connecticut Department of, from the Department of Transportation for the common driveway.
Okay.
I think there's a letter. Did we read the letter from Dennis Johnson?
No.
Okay, there's a letter from Dennis, too, that just said, "The soil testing conducted on that site reveals suitable conditions for construction of a septic system sufficient in size to accommodate the design flow of the proposed retail store. The engineered design plan is specif-- prepared for the sys-- oh my gosh. For the septic system has been reviewed and complied with technical standards of the public health code. Soil, based upon soil test results and site review plan, is recommended the applications and proposals be approved."
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's good.
Chairman, please, is your electric motion?
Oh, please. Can I make a suggestion? In your motion, you not read the conditions of approval, at least not the 1, 2, 3. Those are the ones that you've already read. If I read Kevin's memo, you don't have to repeat them.
Okay.
If I want to incorporate them all, those.
Yeah.
If you want to incorporate, these conditions do not address the issue of the trees in the front. We have to discuss that separately, along with the question of the barn, or barn window, or whatever they're called. Also, if you'll notice in the motion, we don't have the exact title and dates on the planting plan, the site landing plan, and the building elevations, but that information is here, so you don't have to, you don't have to wonder why that's not fleshed out there.
Vote is that the Giller Planning Zone Commission approves site plan applications for NERP holding an acquisitions company, Tractor Supply Co., at 2945 Boston Post Road, lot 33, lot 5A, parcel B, as shown on what has been already proposed to us. Proposed retail building for Tractor Supply Company, 15 sheets prepared by Halcy, Pearson, and Cassidy, dated November 5, 2014, revised to 12/26/2014. Planting plans for Tractor Supply prepared by Fuss and O'Neal dated, undated, what we have today, site plan, site lighting plan, and building elevations. This application is approved with the following conditions: the conditions that were listed, well, I guess, the conditions that were listed in the letter from Kevin McGee dated January 6, 2015, additionally, that the recommendations of the design review committee as stated in the Minnesota environmental policies or 14 meetings to be included in the final plans, excluding the faux barn door recommendation, and prior to issuance of a building permit, the final plans be reviewed by the DRC. Number five, that prior to the issuance of a building permit or site development permits and encroachment permit be secured by, from the Department of Transportation for the common driveway. This application has been approved based upon finding that it conforms with the zoning code.
You're missing a couple of the wetlands.
Oh, right, correct.
One, two, three, and four of the wetlands. Five is the one.
I'll incorporate the conditions of the wetland, the letter that were not already included from the environmental planner's letter.
Does that include the recommendations? Is that what we're talking about here, Ian?
Yeah, I'm sure if you.
Yeah, I've got, I've got the recommendations.
And you've seen these recommendations from both our planner, no, you haven't, so you have no idea what I just said.
I heard Kevin.
Okay, you heard the, you heard Kevin, but you don't even, so we should.
They're at the wetlands meeting, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're at the wetlands meeting. The one that was a surprise to me was the trees.
The trees. That wasn't, that's not included in what I just said.
Yeah, you might want to just go over.
I'm incorporating 1, 2, 3, and 4.
And the bottom, on the last page.
Is there an extra copy of that?
Yes.
Here you go, sir.
Can we just real quick?
So.
You want a second this time?
Second.
Yeah. Okay, are you adding other things to it?
Yeah, I'm gonna request that you incorporate condition one. All landscape plantings and maintenance operations shall be performed by a professional licensed landscaping contractor and under the supervision of a licensed landscaper. I'm going to ask that you incorporate number two. Site lighting should be designed with downlit, full cutoff fixtures which produce zero luminous at the edge of the wetlands. I'm going to request that you incorporate number three. The stormwater system operations should be conducted in accordance to the stormwater management report, stormwater, water management report, and post-construction stormwater quality and planting pollution plan note. On plan sheet seven of 10, any revisions made to the maintenance procedures be approved by the planning, by the wetlands and zoning enforcement officer and town engineer. A copy of the annual inspection report should be submitted to the town engineer and the zoning enforcement officer. I'm going to request that you incorporate number four. The contractor shall clean out all storm drainage components, including but not limited to surface and subsurface detention basins, water quality structures, catch basins, manholes, and pipes for town inspection and confirmation of cleanliness just prior to certificate of occupancy and zoning compliance. And did you want number six as well?
And yes, six would be.
But not number five.
Five is already included.
Five is included, yeah. And number six, I'm going to request that you include number six, no outside storage of chemical agricultural supplies.
Do you guys have any problems with any of those conditions that were just listed? I will incorporate them.
Re-second.
Okay.
We got that, Michelle?
What else have we got on the side of 38?
Well, just the trees. I don't know if anyone has a problem with not, not requiring that, the trees, but similar thing I went down. And also the barn doors. I told them, the design review committee wants to have a reason why they want the barn doors. I, like Tom, think that would be nice.
I'm with Tom. But also with Kevin on the trees. You know, we're trying to manage the growth of West End and make it as attractive as we can. They're working really hard, the team, to come up with plans on the ways that they can make their own town more beautiful. And anything we can do to help that would really go a long way.
I think we should let the design review committees' recommendations ride at this point, and then, since it is cosmetic, the app can bring them around, or.
What does that mean?
For the faux barn doors.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the barn doors is one. I'm not concerned about the barn doors whatsoever.
Do we have to put a note in that, though, that we did lie? I said.
So we're just keeping the design.
So, so this is the design that they're presenting, and it shows those, those, those faux doors. My application, my, my, my.
Motion.
Motion said everything that the design review committee suggested except for.
Remove all the doors.
Yes.
We'd like those faux doors for Tom.
If you wanna have those.
Those are your doors.
Every time I write that, I'm gonna use your doors. Can I still make a recommendation?
Yes.
Argument up.
Again, what happens is you approve a condition that says we need to put the trees along the frontage. I need to go back to Tractor Supply, again, get them to read to it, so we can go forward. If they don't, then I gotta come back to you. I'm willing to do that, approach that, but I'd like a little bit of flexibility. As an alternate, could we consider maybe in this area, rather than this corner being shrubs, than this area being grass, maybe we continue a shrub, or a shrub hedge along the frontage? So you'd end up with more plantings, lower plantings, meaning what Tractor Supply is looking for, what their typical criteria is, but have additional landscaping along the frontage of the building.
You represented to us that the one location that you're familiar with that has these large trees is the worst location for business, but is correct.
That's for trees.
Yeah, I know you're talking about trees. So the shrub idea, I sort of like, because I'm in favor of making sure that a business that gets booked into town will be able to thrive in that town, rather than having to have some issues later.
That's a quantum leap, to say it's because of the trees.
Well, that's what, that's what they were presenting to me. I can't, I don't know much about, you know, the Tractor Supply.
The pharmacy store is very tough to see.
Sure.
So, our tree wardens here, what do you think?
I mean, trees are, is an improvement through there. It kind of adds, it keeps sort of what's there, because it's sort of bushy now, so it kind of keeps this sort of landscape that's, that's out there now.
You down with that? You're okay with that?
I'll be okay. I'll survive. I didn't beat up tonight.
Beat up? You know, it's a quarter after 12. I mean, we're all beat up.
You lost two feet, several trees.
I know.
Right. All right, so, but your current, the current state of your motion.
Doesn't have these shrubs going across.
So, are you willing to?
Yes, I will.
And are you willing to second that?
What specifically do we have in the motion now?
What was recommended, having the shrubs that are just on the.
On the landscape strip.
On the southeast. On the southeast corner.
On the southeast corner.
Will it extend, wrap it around?
Across the front. That, would that be okay, you think, with?
Yeah, at least, you know, we're not to spell out like one every six feet or.
No, they, they mean, they're gonna, what they have.
That won't make the impact sales.
George, was that clear or not?
No.
Or incorporating into the motion?
The plan you revised to show the extension of the shrubs around the rest of the perimeter of the front.
And you said some moved.
Some moved.
And I say reset.
Okay, so we have.
The barn doors, are they in?
The barn doors are in. They're Tom's doors. I mean, I was thinking him.
If they want Josh's.
Yeah.
They're in, they're in.
Okay, the shrubs are okay. Are there any other on type? Listen.
We've already.
Yeah. You okay with everything so far?
I'm good, no. Thank you.
Brian?
And staff, we have clarity on our motion, right?
Yeah.
Brian wants to talk.
It's filled with chaos.
Come on, Brian.
They got three words.
It's a quarter after 12.
I know.
If we use vote, yes.
The first thing I wanna say is it's a quarter after 12, so my wife knows for real I'm a Connecticut owner. She probably thinks I'm an ogre, so this is gonna prove I'm here.
It's true, it's true.
No, I'm not gonna.
Get the camera out, get the camera.
I'm not gonna say a lot about this, other than, and I think we're moving ahead. You know, I've been in this role about three and a half years. Two businesses that have been asked for in my three and a half years is Trader Joe's and Tractor Supply. We're not gonna get Trader Joe's for a lot of different reasons, but we have the opportunity to get Tractor Supply. The farm community, a lot of the tradespeople, would like to see this business here. It's obvious from the presentation you're seeing. Jim, and Matt, and the others from the group have worked clearly with Town Hall South, numerous meetings, several times a design review. We've gone through the planning and zoning to get this property zoned to accept this kind of a business. So, I mean, I think it's one, been one of the most comprehensive projects that I've seen or been involved with, and it's been nearly the three years, three and a half years I've been. They started even before I got here, so I would like to see this project approved. I think we're talking about some tweaks right now, you know, little things in principle. And it's, I mean, it's funny, like the faux windows, most of you like them. They asked, they asked for it to look more barn-like, so they put them in. They put the roof line in to make it more barn-like, and then the group of people said, no, no, we don't like the, they wanted real windows. They couldn't provide real windows because in the inside of the store, they need shelving area and display area. So they thought this was a compromise, Tractor Supply. So we were sort of surprised that day when they said, I wouldn't really care for those. But anyhow, enough said, it's late.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve, want to just real quick chime in and give you every opportunity for staff.
Well, obviously, I would also like.
You have a motion on the table.
Pardon, correct?
Yeah, but we're also in discussion.
We give our quest input.
We're in discussion.
George, you've suffered through worse.
Please, sir.
Well, I also want to speak on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, say we're very happy that it's done to this point, and, you know, thank you for working with them, because obviously you have been doing that tonight, and we deserve thanks, too.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other discussion?
Call the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
You got well.
Come on, guys, wait, 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 wait. It's only 12 after 12. You don't have to go home.
These are all farmers, they gotta milk cows.
Even lower to two degrees.
Okay. Here we go. Number two, Paraco Gas Corp., DV Gas Station, 1046 Boston Post Road, lot 46, lot 24. Zone DV site plan modification, pledgement of propane cylinder cage, receive and take action. This propane cage is there and has been there. Is there a change in where it is, or?
I don't know. It's the half owners here.
Somebody here for everything? Anyone here?
He was just here.
I have no doors.
He fell asleep. He went out.
He's here.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's table this to the next meeting.
Where is this? Is it?
177.
There's a propane cage inside of the.
That cage is there.
Oh, okay.
Just across from CBS.
It's already there.
Yeah, it's already there.
They had some bins there, I recall, a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to table this to our January 21st meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Leffington Road, 91 Leffington Road, LLC, 770 Boston Post Road, apartment 320, lot 47, lot 217, Zone TS. Site plan modification, convert apartment 320 into two one-bedroom apartments.
You got it.
All right, sir.
Frank Vigliotti, a member of 91 Leffington Road LLC, which owns Village Walk, 770 Boston Post Road. So, similar to other applications, we have one very large two-bedroom apartment, which is just over 1,000 square feet. We want it converted to two one-bedrooms, just over 500 square feet each. We accomplished that by not even increasing any of the footprint, just adding, converting this closet, putting a full shed dormer right here on the front. It's kind of.
We accomplished that by not even increasing any of the footprint, just adding, converting this closet, putting a full shed dormer, right here on the front. It's kind of black, I don't know if it's better on...
No, it's good.
Yeah, okay. And that, that also satisfies the egress window requirement, which is not currently in that bedroom. We have an issue with that, but it all...
Have you, have you finished the last one you did from last month yet?
Not yet, but we're working on that.
And, and you did one a few months before that, and that one's...
One, one of the two rented, yeah.
Yep, they rented right away.
One of them, two. Just one's still vacant.
Okay. You guys got questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is straightforward, and it's also identical to, or, I mean, it's not identical, but it's substantially similar to the previous one that we...
But I think there's a letter approved.
There is. The applicant proposes to split a two-bedroom apartment to two one-bedroom apartments. The proposed change will not result in an increase in the waste water design block, add a septic system, capacity currently exists on site to accommodate disposal from the existing retail residential building. The applicant's proposed building modification provides with provisions of the public health code. This was from Dennis Johnson, David Day.
Any other letters?
No.
Walter, do you have a motion?
I do, I have a motion. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan modification for 91 Lefingwell LLC, 770 Boston Post Road, apartment 320, map 47, lot 21-7, to convert apartment 320 to two one-bedroom apartments as shown on application dated 12/11/14. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code.
Second.
Yes, I did that all in one breath, thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Call the question.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Applications to receive special permits from McClellan Kevin, 45 Woodfield Street, map 28, lot 5, and heat days, zone 1, L 1, I 1. Site plan, special permit, coastal area management plan, 15 unit, oh, this is the 15 unit on, I know what this is, residential townhouses, 273 to 250, 273, 91. Received and set public hearing date 1/21. Do we need to move that out, or is that a good date?
No, that's good.
That's good. Can I get a motion to...
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oceano LLC, Jeffrey Burnin, 45 Woodfield Street, map 29, lot 1, wait, zone R3, coastal area management site plan, install concrete footers to existing support posts, reinforce bailing footing foundation. I know this one, too, with concrete posts for existing garage, 273, 91. Received and set public hearing date, this is an after the fact. This is, cement mixer pulled up to the garage, pouring the concrete directly across the street from a planning and zoning commissioner's house. Okay, can I...
But just before, before we actually prove this, there's a cease and desist problem, because this application was made, and the applicant is continuing work. The applicant also seems to be a very sophisticated developer who's well aware of planning and zoning regulations, and continues to fail to comply with them, even as of a couple of days ago. So, is there a cease and desist that's necessary, or is there another mechanism by which we can...
They were sent a notice of violation.
They are.
And they responded to the notice of violation by making application to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And now that application...
They didn't stop work because the garage was jacked up, and they were afraid that the wind and wave action might actually make it collapse down into the water. So, they chose to pour the cement into the sonnets.
And now they have stopped work?
Yeah.
And they also have, they also have a number of required DEP permits presumably for that?
Oh, probably.
So, what do you say?
They're talking to DEP today.
Do we need to see those DEP permits before we...
No, you can, you can do your part approval, and then they have to get approval through you. And they'll figure through you.
So, if they continue to do work while the application is pending, what's the appropriate remedy?
They're not doing any work now.
I mean, if they were to start again while the application was pending?
Well, they do that at their own risk, because if it gets denied, then they have to rip it out.
Yes, thank you.
Tom?
We just, I mean, they want a hearing, and I guess...
We have to receive it, yeah.
And it's for... All right, so, can I get a motion to set the date to 1/21/15?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Still want, and who's still want that?
You have item, item number three under correspondence, it's a request to locate two trailers for temporary storage for two years. They probably will be gone within six months.
Why do they need storage trailers? Or do they care?
It's a restaurant that, they're out of business, and the owner is storing the restaurant equipment in the trailers until he finalizes the lease, is working in another town. The lease should be finalized within, I'd say, the next month or so. He actually doesn't want to keep the things in the trailers, because the trailers are expensive.
Right.
Have you seen those trailers?
Yes.
Where's that initial area?
I've seen the...
What do they look like, I mean, have they presented, or a piece of junk?
No, they're fine.
They're fine. Like I want in my neighborhood, and have somebody halfway dipped over, it's a piece of junk. Yes, it's...
Can we...
Really? Okay, go look at that.
Can we tighten up the timeframe for re-review in case the whole thing goes south, and they sit there for a long time?
On these? Sure. You could grant it for one year if you want.
Nine months, yeah, or any...
Time likes nine months.
Yeah, do whatever you want.
He got those faux barn window doors.
They say nine months, and then...
I'm not a roll.
Let's get, this meeting is timed.
All right, so, so removal is for nine months?
Let's do it for nine.
We have to move and...
We have to move it?
Yeah.
Have the neighbors complaining or anything?
They will be.
I'll second it.
No.
I'll second your, I'll second your nine months. And I won't rate you.
Well, I say, then I have to say officially that I move that we grant a, what are we gonna grant him here?
Permission to...
Permission to locate the trailers for no more than nine months on the property located...
2209 Durham Road.
2209 Durham Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What are we doing with this referral for conservation easement?
Actually, approved as part of your subdivision, so it's coming back, it's formality of a mandatory referral, so it's a formality.
Do we have to do anything?
Move approval of the mandatory referral.
So, this is the one with the driveway where he put it through the conservation easement, even though he's the original developer, to Route 77?
No, 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 no. This is the subdivision over Stepstone.
Is that right?
Yes.
And the other thing is also formality of subdivision filing extension?
Yeah, that, that one, he's not, that came up somewhere, wherever I was yesterday.
We'll discuss this at the noon west.
Right, so he's not, even though, he doesn't have a definite sale yet, so he doesn't...
He will as of approval tonight.
Right, so, so do we want to continue giving him this extension? And what came out is that he's paying a slightly lower rate of taxes on one lot instead of two subdivided lots.
Correct.
And so we're granting him an extension to not pay those higher taxes, but now he has approval to his, for his friends at Tractor Supply.
Well, he has to file subdivision act before he sells his property, so he's, that's, I'm sure he's gonna do that. This is, this is a little more or so formality, yes.
Yeah, so, all right, so, we, did we take a vote on the mandatory referral and subset?
Yeah, we did, we did, we're not second it. You did not second, you seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the request for the extension to file subdivision, person B...
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Roger Reynolds is going on the planning committee. Roger has generously offered to give his expertise in terms of the planning committee, we want to thank him.
Please.
Good for him, and I wish a lot more people in Guilford would be so involved. We're coming up on the...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also recommend Mr. Al Purzyk.
This is the one I spoke, was that you about?
That's correct. His name is spelled, P U R Z Y C K I. I'd like to request that you appoint him to the Plan of Conservation and Development Committee.
Right, and we, MJ had said that she could use an extra pair of hands in an email discussion that I was having with her, she's on board with this, and so I would like to move ahead with that appointment, too. Approval of bills...
Michelle, his, his address is 630 West Lake Avenue, Guilford.
Is he, is he filing an application with the Board of Sluckman, or either your town committee or mine?
For what?
The Plan of Conservation, the Conservation Commission? What you're talking about?
I'm correct.
P O C D. P O C D, that's right.
Okay, so has he, is either, has he filed, is, is he a Dem or Republican? I mean, those, those get, usually get reviewed by the town committees.
The Plan of Conservation Development Appointments? Ray Bauer appointed the Plan of Conservation, most of the Plan of Conservation Development Committee. It's a direct appointment by the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So, it's not, it's not the...
Like the Planning and Zoning Committees.
It's not, it's not...
It's steering committee for the Plan of Conservation.
Okay, then, yeah, I just want to make sure we're doing it right, that's all. Okay.
Well, we're not doing everything right. We're doing our best.
I mean, like, 90% of the draft is done, it's going through, kind of like, final revision, so I'm not sure...
MJ, MJ discussed that with me, and she's on board with this.
Should bring in back the town chairs, and, I mean, the chairs of the, the other committees.
Okay.
You'll like him, Brian. You'll like him. He's not, it's not that other thing, this is, he's a technical guy.
Okay.
Promise.
Move the, move the...